About 9.03 and 9.04 both involve students and they need to go home and do their homework. It is the month of May, things are moving along fast, I know. So if we could move that to right after the motion to approve the agenda. If that would be acceptable to board members?
Absolutely.
Is, are there any other additions or modifications?
Yeah, so 9.02, the Habitat for Humanity, which is also a group of students, they were not able to make it tonight and so they requested to be bumped until a later board meeting. So, so.
It's a busy time for our students.
Yes, it is.
Okay. With those additions, corrections, and modifications under consideration, we'll now move to to citizen statements. I have two, but if you do wish to address the board this evening, please fill out one of the Goldenrod Sheets and give it to our recording secretary, Lori. Lori, where'd you go? Around the corner. She'll be back in a second, all right. And, but we'll get started with the two that we have and go from there. And while you're thinking about that, I'd like to thank Jay Morris for running the cameras for us tonight, so the folks at home can see us. Jay, you're gonna be a star by the time this assignment's over with.
Yeah.
All right, with that, Teri, you're first, and then Minnie, you're second. And, Teri, make sure that mic is turned on.
There we go. Everybody hear me? Okay, at home, sometimes when you have this too close, I see that sign, so I'm gonna push it back so that... A little bit closer. How's that? Okay? Okay, a little bit closer? Ah, closer?
Yeah.
That good? Okay. It's okay? Okay. Teri Townsend, tonight I'm here in the capacity of a former vice chairman of the Housing Authority of Champaign County. Some time ago, I asked this board to pass a resolution on student homelessness, and you did. That resolution was sent to the mayor and Urbana City Council. Subsequently, that resolution got lost. The official word that I was given publicly was that the previous mayor was ill and probably just lost that resolution. For the last year or what have you, I have been working on this issue. I'm happy to report that I recently met with the new mayor, Diane Marlin. I'm thoroughly impressed. These issues, student homelessness and affordable housing, I think, are going to be addressed like never before. I expect great change in the Housing Authority Board. There's like two people that are up for appointment in June and July. Be clear, Urbana will then have three sitting members on the Board of Commissioners for the first time in a long time. The issues that are coming forward now are a little bit troubling. One, because of the University of Illinois Student Growth Plan. I, I'm requesting that you pay attention to that. They want to bring in more and more students. And since 2010, the Housing Authority has implemented the largest social experiment in the history of Champaign County. It's called moving to work. This is actually a congressional authorized experiment. And we're evaluating that now and I should have a report to all the public bodies in about six months. Lastly, this was a short-term initiative on my part, and partnering with you, I think we're gonna see some really good things in Urbana. Our students should not live in trucks. They should not have to have to deal with these kind of issues. And so far, I think we're doing quite well. Long-term, I am gonna try to rewrite the Housing Authority footprint on the state level. And that is it. Thank you so much for your time and your support. And the difficult things that you do, I applaud you.
Thank you.
Minnie, and then after Minnie will be Elaine.
Good evening. I have that teacher voice, so if I get too loud, just tell me to...
And, and for the purpose of the folks at home, both of you need to introduce yourself at the right time.
Okay. I am Minnie Pearson. I am NAACP Champaign County Branch President and a retired teacher from Unit Four for over, almost thirty years, and still in and out of the schools because I deeply care about students and I wanna kinda keep my hands on the pulse of what's going on with them. And although you don't see me at your board meetings that often, I am watching. And I do see your superintendent, Dr. Donald Owens, at many community events because he definitely cares about the students. And you can tell by a person's actions. So tonight, I'm also speaking on behalf of Barbara Gillespie, who is in NAACP and ACSO Chairperson, who's in and out of the Urbana schools. She's very concerned because we are talking and discussing daily the high suspension rates of our children. We have to do something different. We can't keep doing the same things and expect to get different results. You can't just take children and throw them out. You have a duty to educate those children, whether they are problematic or not. You have to find a place where they are going to get some formal education, some, some, some type of curriculum in them every day. Taking them and put, that's only, that only really, seriously, and you know this, it creates a bigger problem. Because we all live in this community. We need to support Don and what he's doing. He's looking out, it's not popular, I know that. And nothing worth doing is going to be easy. So, the NAACP Champaign County Branch, Barbara Gillespie, and my person who, who attends the meetings, every school board meeting, Deb McFarland and I, we all agree on what Don is doing. And we wanna congratulate you all for being so considerate when it comes to the education of our children. That, I mean, who said that it's going to be easy? It's not. I was a teacher that many years, and I tell you, there was times when I wanted to throw up my hands. But this is the profession that we got into and we knew what we were doing when we did it. So now let's do it and continue to do it for the betterment of our children. Deb, do you have anything?
Thank you, and keep up the good work.
Tell them who you are.
Deborah McFarland, a proud alum of Urbana High School, thank you.
Sorry, had my mic off. Elaine, and then after Elaine will be Jean Jacques Ponce.
Hi, I'm Dr. Elaine Spungen. I am one of the people helping the school district and especially UHS and UMS implement restorative justice and restorative practices for the last few years. I want to speak today in support of continuing the restructuring of the discipline system to be more restorative and more racially equitable. I want to speak first to some voices of faculty and staff that I think maybe haven't been heard as much out loud. Because of some of the relationships that I've created with teachers and staff, they have come and spoken to me in private. And there are many teachers and staff who've been speaking in support of this initiative and of the urgency that they have been feeling. There has been some that have actually said, "Why not sooner?" When I've encouraged them to voice that opinion, which I haven't heard as much, people have said that they're concerned in speaking because the other voices seem so dominant. They're concerned because there doesn't seem to be kind of a space and a forum for that. So that is one thing I wanted to bring to the front. And many of those have been actually faculty and staff of color, but of course, not all. I also want to speak to the meetings I've been going to at UMS, at, where the faculty and staff have been working really with a huge commitment on their ideas of how the discipline system can support both teachers and students and parents in a more proactive way next year. And if you go to UMS and you look at their conference room, it's incredible. They've used like three or four whiteboards of ideas. And it's telling that parents, students, and teachers are actually represented there as in terms of the kind of supports that are needed. We, some of us spoke to UMS faculty and staff yesterday, and one of the things we heard is that there was a lot of concern that the process may come to a pause. And that instead, people wanted a plan for next year, people wanted to continue, and that there was a commitment. And lots and lots of work has already been put into this. I said in my last comments to the board that it takes courage to create meaningful change. As you know, our district was actually proactive in implementing restorative practices and restorative justice before Senate Bill 100 was passed. Senate Bill 100 is a bill that creates a higher threshold and like more accountability for suspending students out of school because decades of research have shown that suspension actually does not transform behavior and does not improve school climate. Suspension actually hurts, we now have studies to show that it hurts the students in the classrooms who were not involved in incidents. So it actually does not create safety. As you know, our school district implemented restorative practices before this. So they were proactive, where other school districts have been reactive and have implemented restorative practices, sometimes out of a concern that they're going to be state audits for those districts that have significant disproportionality. Our district was there first. And I feel proud of that, proud of being a part of that movement, and I hope that we can continue that momentum to create better climate and better outcomes for everybody. As you saw my presentation on our restorative data, in February, before any of this was discussed, it's not enough to just implement restorative practices, we need to implement them with high fidelity. And high fidelity restorative practices mean that we're focusing on school climate, universals. We are focusing on incorporating social-emotional learning into our schools, modeling it, doing it, and addressing the roots of conflicts and repairing harm. And as you all know, punishment doesn't do that, and restorative approaches do. I believe, from my observations, that the process that the faculty and staff at UMS have started actually addresses that high fidelity. They are looking at supports, they're looking at social-emotional learning, they're looking really creatively at how we can do this better. And one of the things that people shared last night is that the UMS discipline system was already struggling this fall. So, the impetus to improve it, to make it stronger, more sustainable, is there, maybe from faculty who are not speaking up as much. I believe that we need to continue the momentum and to continue the great work we're doing and the great work that our teachers and staff have done with parents, teachers, and students in mind.
Bonsoir.
Jean, and then after Jean, Bienvenue.
My name is Jean Jacques Poussard, and I'm a professor of French at the University of Illinois and a recent transplant to Urbana. And I've come to speak to you tonight in favor of the dual-language program in French. I am, first of all, a transplant, I'm born and raised in Colorado, but transplanted from Canada where my daughter was born three years ago. And I have a five-year-old currently in, I have a five-year-old currently as a kindergartner at Yankee Ridge. And I'm particularly interested in Yankee Ridge being awarded the, awarded, I say because I think it's a privilege, the dual-language program. However, I wanna say straight up that it's really nice to come to a community where dual-language programs exist, where they're being supported and they're being developed. I think that coming from a Canadian background where I, where my daughter was born, it's very nice to see a school board that not only understands but supports dual-language programs. It's extremely important for the development of young people to have access to second, sometimes third, languages. So, good on you. I think that the dual-language in French program is a great opportunity and also potentially proposes some challenges. And that one of the things that you might consider while you think about where to house it is how to protect the community that you're particularly looking forward to serving there. And how that community might also be received in the school. So, I have very little knowledge of the schools that you're deciding about. I've just moved to town, I don't know the schools, okay? But from my perspective, having seen the building that's happening at Yankee Ridge and also the general atmosphere at Yankee Ridge, I think it would be a very strong cultural enrichment for that school. And I'm sure that many of you have questions about that, or there's discussion to be had, and I, I would be glad to certainly dialogue with anyone who feels like they would like to have some conversation about that. Also, I'd like to just add a plug that the University of Illinois Department of French and Italian is developing teachers. That's one of the things that we do. And we have two, three, now four faculty members who are interested in training teachers to become, to enter the community. I have a freshman in my class today who's saying, "I'd like to be a French teacher." So I, I would, it would be very great to have a context where student teaching can happen in Urbana. Thank you.
Bienvenue, Lugano? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Bonsoir. Je m'appelle Bienvenue Lugano. Je suis père des élèves qui fréquentent les écoles ici à Urbana.
His name is Mr. Lugano, and he has children in the Urbana School District?
Et je suis vraiment très content de l'initiative d'instaurer le programme bilingue dans les écoles à Urbana.
He's very happy about your initiative to start a bilingual program at the Urbana School?
Parce que nous faisons face à un problème très sérieux dans la communauté.
Because the community is facing a very serious problem?
Nous sommes venus du Congo pour la plupart.
Most of them came from Congo?
Et là, nous parlons français et les langues locales.
Where French and local, other local languages are spoken?
Et quand nous sommes arrivés ici, c'était vraiment un défi à relever.
It was a big challenge when they first got here?
Et jusqu'à présent, il y a beaucoup la fuite de gens qui arrivent du Congo et d'autres pays francophones.
And there are many more coming from Congo and other French-speaking countries?
Et ils sont, ils repartent vite d'ici parce qu'ils ne trouvent pas de travail.
Some of them leave fast from here because they can't find any work?
Et on leur impose de parler anglais avant d'avoir le travail.
And that it's imposed them to be able to speak English well before they can find a job?
Pour la langue, ça prend quand on est encore jeune.
But languages are best learned when you're still young?
On déjà âgé, car la quarantaine déjà c'est difficile.
But when you're older, for example, in your forties, it's already harder?
C'est pourquoi j'ai salut cette initiative, c'est vraiment la bienvenue parmi nous.
That's why he welcomes this initiative?
Et j'ai quelques préoccupations à vous soumettre néanmoins.
He still has some precautions he wants to talk to you about?
Le choix de l'école, c'est, c'est quelle école encore? C'est pas encore décidé. Parce qu'il y a, je suis quand même le porteur de parole de d'autres parents qui ne sont pas venus.
He's representing all the other parents who have not come?
Parce que j'ai sous ma direction beaucoup de gens en tant que pasteur aussi.
Because he's a pastor, so he's representing his congregation?
J'ai entendu parler de Ridge, Yankee Ridge, et les parents s'inquiètent parce qu'ils ne savent pas beaucoup de choses sur cette école-là.
So he heard about Yankee Ridge being a possible location for the dual-language program, and the parents are a little worried because they don't know much about the school?
Et la seconde préoccupation, c'est par rapport aux matériels didactiques.
So his second precaution is about the teaching materials?
Comment est-ce que vous allez faire pour traduire les enseignements qui sont déjà en anglais et les traduire en français? Est-ce que vous allez garder la même tenacité ou alors ça peut diluer les cours, la matière?
Will the English teaching materials be translated directly into French, or will they be at the same strength or the same level? Or will the level of the materials be diluted down to the students into French?
Et aussi, les professeurs qui seront appelés à donner ces cours-là, seront-ils des professeurs qualifiés ou alors vous allez ramasser à gauche et à droite parce que l'éducation de nos enfants a dépend en grande partie aussi?
And he wonders about the level of education of the teachers, will they be, will they have a strong education in French, or will they come from right and left because it's important for the future of the children?
Voilà quelques préoccupations que j'avais à vous soumettre, mais je suis vraiment content de l'initiative.
Those are the precautions he wanted to share by the community, but he's very happy about the initiative that you're taking today?
Thank you.
Evelyn? Evelyn? Ms. Underwood? You're next.
I was in charge, it's good that we got an interpreter for all kinds of people. I thought I would come and, a lot is on my mind. I'm Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. And today, I'm wearing one hat. I could wear twenty-five at least. But today, I'm wearing the hat of Education Director at the New Free World Baptist Church. And my pastor, Bishop King James Underwood, is unable to be here. However, we've talked about what's been going on. A number of our members, as well as people who have been bused into our church, have had the opportunity to read the newspaper and look into what's going on. Some of our people had the opportunity to hear our courageous superintendent speak on the radio, to share with the people about what's going on. And it was appreciated. I'm clapping for a number of people. It was very courageous for him to go. Maybe he didn't think so, but a lot of people appreciated him going on radio to share with many people about what's going on in the school district. And it was very much appreciated. And the information, he was able to share in layman's terms so people could understand. And that was very much appreciated. A lot of people are educated, a lot of people are not. And it was appreciated that he was able to share in layman's terms so people could understand. Because a lot of people listen to on Sunday mornings that radio program. And Eldridge Tatted Park would like for you, if you could, to come back. And, because a number of people would like to learn more, and some people don't take the news 'cause that. So, anyway, but I'm representing my church tonight, so I'm not gonna take, I probably only have five minutes or less. Because he's probably counting right now.
Three left.
But my concern, and our church concern and our people, is with the suspension rate. And we would like to see, as a faith-based community, more, I should say, fewer suspensions. And we support what Dr. Owen and the Urbana faculty and people are trying to do to have fewer students suspended at a, in the restorative justice program that they are trying to institute in Urbana schools. And I'll stop at that.
Does anyone else wish to address the board this evening? That's the end of my list of forms. Anyone else wish to address the board? All right, hearing none, we'll move forward with our, we have no call for an exec session after tonight's meeting. We do need a motion to approve the agenda as, as changed, as modified.
So moved.
Second. Moved in second at all, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. So with our modified agenda, we'll go immediately to our, two of our study topics, 9.03, Mental Health Awareness Day recap.
They might not be here yet because they might have...
Thought they were late.
...anticipated that it was a longer agenda, so we'll, we'll...
We'll go to 9.04, Minority Enrichment Program then. When you come to the mic, just give us your name and go from there. It has to be great, there you go.
Good evening, everyone. I am Klinee Campbell. I'm the Minority Enrichment Coordinator at the school. Feel free to please call me CeCe, that's what everyone knows me as. I'm familiar with some faces. I worked with Mr. Stark for four years as his assistant, and this is my first year in this role. And I wanted to come and give you all an overview of what I do. I'm trying to. I'm used to, look, they gave me an apple, now I'm, okay. So I won't read bullet by bullet, I'll just take you through a typical day at the high school for me. I have a caseload of students, generally the DNF list for AP and AP prep students. I review that list and I bother students on a weekly basis. I'll send passes for them, they'll come to my room. And we'll go over pretty much their missing assignments or whatever they're going through at that time. It could be I was out of school, I missed that assignment, I just didn't do it, I didn't know how to do it, I didn't know that we had this assignment. So one of my responsibilities and one of my duties is to make sure that students are aware of what their grades look like and how it impacts them and, am I too close? It impacts them and the rest of their life. I also contact parents in case students are not following up with me or they're ignoring my passes. I generally catch them in the hallway during lunchtime or stand outside of their classes when they are getting, when they are dismissed. Most parents are really appreciative of the phone call that I give them about their students' progress. I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry. Okay, I also work with students in the EBD program. I provide emotional support for them. I provide... I provide interventions for them when they're in their emotions, when they're in an uproar, when they're angry, when they can't come down. I try to de-escalate the issue as much as I can. I even have... Some of the students have my cellphone number. If I'm not in my room, they'll FaceTime me, "Ms. CeCe, where are you?" And I'll actually come to their rescue and see what do they need at that moment. There was a student who was having an issue in the restroom. And for all my students that know me, I hate restrooms. But I was right there giving them a shoulder to lean on in that situation. What else? Okay, I'm gonna go through everything. I also coordinate tutors with University of Illinois, with Eastern, and with surrounding students who would like to... I'm sorry, Parkland, who would like to come in and work with the students. It's kind of difficult, honestly, to get students, the U of I and the Parkland students, to come on a consistent basis. That is one of the problems that I run into in having tutors available for the students. As the students come in and they need help with something, I refer them to after-school tutoring for the Twenty-First Century, and I also refer them to teachers. And sometimes I try to help them or someone in my room. I will walk and try to go get them help, whatever they need help with. Oh, I guess that... Okay. My other responsibilities as the Minority Enrichment Coordinator is the African-American Club, the Asian-American Club, and the Latino-American Club. And I run those meetings weekly. And we have parties and so... You know what? I actually have them here. I'm gonna bring up Jada Barbie to introduce about the African-American Club. Uh-oh. Those are some pictures I took, I'm sorry. These are students working in my room, just in case. Okay.
Okay. Hello. My name is Jada Barbie. I'm a senior at the Urbana High School. I am super-duper excited to graduate. But anyway. African-American Club. I have been involved with African-American Club since my sophomore year. I was the president, but this year we decided not to have a president. We... And during our Black History Month... I'm sorry, I'm nervous too. Okay. So during our... Before we... For Black History Month, we kicked it off with a Atlanta trip. We went to a total of five colleges and universities. Three of them were HBCUs, which stand for Historically Black Colleges and Universities. The girls, of course, went to Spelman College, which, because this is an all-girls school. And the boys went to Morehouse College. And then we all went to Clark Atlanta University. And then the two universities that we visited was Emory University. But we got rained on at Emory and had to walk all the way across the campus to get to the shelter. So we had kind of an informal tour with a student. Well, not really a student, but like, she didn't really know she was going either, so... That was... That was an interesting day in Atlanta. We also went to Georgia State. But the thing that was the most memorable was being in a room with four other girls, five other girls, and having to, one, figure out when everybody was gonna shower, wake up, and get along. But we were... It was... It was fun because we were able to meet new... Like, hang out with people that you wouldn't usually hang out with. I hung out with a lot of the underclassmen. I got to, you know, know how they think and, like, what they like to do and things like that. So I think that was a very... That was... That was good for us. We also got to kind of go out and have a good time. We went to the Cheesecake Factory. You sat with kind of who you wanted to send... End up sending with, but we all ended up sending with our roommates anyway because we were all close by the end of the trip. At Spelman, the girls got to observe Dr. Natalie Watson Singleton. She let us sit in the back of her classroom on the floor. And we got to listen to an intro to psych class. She let us participate, we drew pictures. It was... That was fun. We also went on an HBCU college trip to Danville. I unfortunately didn't get to go, never get to go. We also had a, like, TV special at the lecture hall after school. It was called Raising Black Colleges and Universities. It was very interesting. We were actually just talking about that while we were sitting in here, about how we didn't know any of the... About the type of history that we had at HBCUs. And I think that's something that we would... Were all allowed to know something about ourselves and our past. That's... That's good. Also, National African-American Parent Involvement Day, also known as NAPIT. We did something untraditional this year. We played Family Feud, the Parents vs. Parents. They... It was school-related. So if you know Family Feud, you had to ask a question. You know, they had to snatch, because we didn't have a buzzer. So you had to snatch something on the table. And that was also a fun time, because you got to see the parents interact with each other. Maybe parents who have never interacted with each other interact. And then afterwards, we had food in Ms. CeCe's room. We were crammed, so we got to sit very close. Our African-American Assembly, which we had closer to the end of the month, in February. Our theme was "I am Black, but Black is not all that I am", which is also a T-shirt that we have on right now. That was interesting. And I think that... That is... Yeah. Okay, so Open Mic Night. One thing that we do is we do one the first semester and one the second semester. It's a chance for any student to come up and share their talents. They could... That could be writing a poem, or saying a poem that they've written, saying any type of creative writing. We've done swat metal one semester. Dancing. So it's very... It's, you know, talent-based. This is our University of Illinois cheer. Not cheer, but like, we're very proud of her because she also was in African-American Club at Urbana High School. She... This is open... Doing Open Mic Night one time. This is at the HBCU College Fair. Ms. CeCe in the corner. This is us in front of the... Well, actually behind the fountain in Atlanta at the Martin Luther King. Not exhibit, but those three, his house, kind of like a... More like a memorial? Yeah, okay, that was a good word. Okay. So, yeah. We were still there in this picture. This is inside the church. And this is Ms. Goodlow's car, because we had to rent vans in Clark Atlanta. So this is Ms. Goodlow's car taking a picture at... In front of Clark Atlanta. And this is a picture of all of us standing on the... On the... Kind of, not the quad, but it's like when you first walk in, next to the admission office. This... During our trip to Atlanta, we were worn out. So this is just a idea of how much stuff that we actually got to do in those four days. We slept every chance we could get because we never went to sleep when we got to the room. But we were wide awake when we got to our destination. This is me getting my unofficial acceptance to Clark Atlanta. Which is the one reason why this trip was important to me and why I'm glad we got to take it this year. This is us doing our media coverage. We also got to have three panel from... Three paneled guests from three different HBCUs across the country. When we were at Morehouse, they have this in their little alleyway. We discussed this for... Until now, actually. Because this is one thing that we like to... This is the big thing that goes on in our schools and in our... In the black community. We cannot expect us... We cannot rise if we call each other the N-word. They're actually separate, but they're together. And then the second question is, do we really love black women? Also, on these campuses, they call each other black queens and black kings and my brother and my sister. And that's something that we got to see each other rise up. Be... See students wa... Rise each other up and not bring each other down. So...
Think my nerves are a little bit better now. I had no one come for the Asian-American Club because of Senior Decision Day. So I'll tell a little bit about what we do there. We have K-pop socials, cultural-related movies. One of our big things we did was a spicy noodle eating challenge, where we had about twenty students with a bowl of ramen and hot, 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 hot sauce. And the first one to take a drink of milk was the loser. But it really wasn't. Everybody did not drink. So we had to try to go get something more hot. But we did come up with a first-place winner. We just took a random pick and let someone win. But that was really, really fun. We had really good support there. Exploration of Asian foods. We cook in the room. I've actually tasted seaweed since I have been in there. And that was... That was something that I take pride in, because I don't just eat anything. And we will also be going to K... Kofusion next week to have a social. This is something not inside school. This is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna meet with the students outside of school. Here's a couple pictures. That is them dancing to K-pop. I wanted to have a video, but it wouldn't load in my computer. But they were really just dancing. That's her cooking, Lana cooking ramen and us creating a design for an Asian-American Club T-shirt. This is Tay. He was the one, you could tell, he was kind of hot eating those noodles and it was in the news gazette. Okay, now we're gonna have a representative from the Latino-American Club to talk about what we do.
Hi, I'm Savannah. I'm a senior and I'm the president of Latino Club. So Latino Club is a club, basically, where a lot of Latinos and can just have a place to gather and talk about life because, like, Latino life, just in general, is a struggle due to, like, immigration and everything that's been going on. So Latino Club kind of provides that space to be comfortable and kind of relax and be with other Latinos and get comfortable. So ship comes at least like every other week. And so there are Hispanics that are in the engineering program at the U of I. And so they'll come and they'll talk to us about college and what we want to do. And they'll give us advice about, like, ways to achieve certain goals that we have and what classes to take and what classes that are maybe a little harder than others. And so I find that very helpful, considering that I'm going into a STEM field. So I think it helped me a lot personally. They invited us to go to La Casa, where they showed us a presentation about, like, Latinos and what it's like, like, at U of I. And so I thought that was really interesting. We also do fun things like bowling at the Illini Union. Most of the time, it's hard to get people to come because, like, Latinos have to take care of their families and stuff after school. But we try our best to try to get as many people as possible. But the people that do come, we always have lots of fun, like, talking about, like, our family stuff and, you know, things at home. And so other fun things we'll have is... We like cooking. That's just part of our culture. We love food. Who doesn't? But... I taught the Latino Club how to make bunuelos, which is basically like a fried tortilla and you put, like, cinnamon and sugar on it and it's really good. And so I think when I taught people to make that, it kind of brought everyone together because everyone was like, "Oh, my mom does it that way." And so it just created like a stronger connection between everyone. And we also do movie socials, where we see, like, Hispanic movies that are our favorites. And we have a Cinco de Mayo celebration coming up this week, where we're gonna bring in lots of Hispanic foods and we're just gonna watch movies and we're just gonna have fun. And so I think it's just a nice way to de-stress. And Ms. CeCe is always willing to help us, like, do what we want to do. And she helps guide us. And so I appreciate that. And then here we have... Because in October, we have Dia de los Muertos, where we celebrate, like, dead family members. And so right when you walk into the school, there's like this glass. And so we hung up family pictures along with, like, some of our favorite, like, dead celebrities. And we decorated it in a celebration. This is us taking a tour. And one of the people from La Casa are, like, showing us around U of I and, like, giving us some information. And that's about it.
We're almost done, I'm sorry, it's a little lengthy. I also participate in after-school activities. This is not necessarily MEP, but it's what I do as far as taking time with the students. I actually started a dance team behind the desk when I was Mr. Stark's assistant. And I started with a group of girls. I started with four and it ended with about twenty-five girls. It was an opportunity for support, for mentorship, for sisterhood. And we performed throughout the area. We got to take trips to the Nutcracker. And we also attended and both performed in the February Dance at Cranert. And this is just a couple pictures. Uh-oh. We'll go back. Thanks, students. This was my group at the pep rally and at February Dance. That's both me and Ms. Kayla and three students. And this was also at Cranert at the MLK Celebration. And we also had the opportunity to perform at February Dance. That was very exciting. It was the first time that this has ever been done. We danced with Dr. Nance, Kamal Nance, who is an instructor over at U of I. Okay, some of my goals for next year is to have paid tutors. I mentioned before that it's a struggle to have students because we have to get them based off their schedule. And of course, they're college students, so they have things to do too. And so sometimes I run into dead ends, not having someone right on hand to help a student with maybe math, like calc, trig, not that advanced. So I have to go try to find other resources to get students help to make sure that they succeed in their classes. And it will also help develop relationships and accountability if we can get someone on a more consistent basis. Because what they helped them with last week, they can help them with something else. And then they develop kind of a rapport with one another. And just about in college in general, and why it's important to keep your grades up at a certain level so that you can go to college and succeed. I'd like to have ways to change our school climate. There are a lot of students who, for lack of better words, just say school is boring. And I want to make school fun so they can come to school and feel like it's a place they want to be, opposed to a place where they have to be. So Fun Fridays, have a DJ in the cafeteria on a weekly basis or maybe a monthly basis. An end-of-the-year field day, which you just got approved, thank you, Mr. Stark. A retreat for the student body. And that may look like a male coming in and speak to all the males and a female coming in and speak to all the females, just about empowerment, what it is to be a lady, what it is to be a man, how do you deal with society. Not all professionals, possibly someone in a prison who has a background that they had to strive and to make it through. You know, to give a student encouragement that everybody's road is not always pretty. Also, to have a study jam. This is what I wanted to do as far as having teachers or tutors after school with music, with fun, with, like, food. And have like a math spot, a science spot, history spot. Just to come together and de-stress and actually get work done. Interim is a, for lack of a better term, Mental Health Day, where we come in and teachers and students do something together. Just drop work for a day and let's... Let's learn how to learn and get along with one another. Formal dances, International Fest, that's one of the big things I've been talking about for the last three years. But finally, I'm... for the last three years, but finally, I'm in the place that I can possibly make it happen, where all cultures come together, and they present a dance, and it could be a fundraiser for the school, where families come out, where other cultures come out with food, and we just watch a show. I also would like to implement a mentor program for eighth and eleventh graders. So, the so the eighth graders will be linked with a junior, and the eighth grader will come over to the school and have a shadow day, and they can potentially develop a relationship. So, when they graduate, they'll have a senior in the school that they know that they can go to for any questions or concerns. And maybe the senior can just kinda look out for them, big sister, little brother. Let me, big sister, little sister type of deal, just as more support. Hey, I'm checking up on you, how you doing in your classes? Do you need anything? Just to give the senior, I guess, that rep that they really think they have already, as being a senior. And one of my other goals is to make the elementary school and middle schools somehow, some way to try to make them aware of what AP really is. I know it's early to start talking about AP and AP prep to a first or second grader, but it's not too early to understand how to practice studying. I mean, to have good study habits, and to realize that grades will carry on, and your habits will carry on from this size up to that size. So, planting seeds early is something that I would really like to do. Okay, now, I'm gonna have Ms. Kayla Goodlow come and talk about the student reflections, and student and tutor reflections. We're almost done, thank you.
Okay, I am Kayla Goodlow, and I'm gonna keep it short, so that we can get done. But basically, a lot of people gave reflections from different walks of life. So, an MEP volunteer gave a reflection, a UHS English teacher, Ms. Sessine, and a UHS student teacher, a UHS sophomore. And then, we have some students here that are going to give their reflection. And I just wanna start with mine. I've worked closely with MEP for the last three years that I've been here. And I would have to say that MEP is one of the integral parts of the reasons why I felt comfortable at UHS. So, as a teacher in the building, this has made me feel comfortable, because I've been able to see students being affected outside of the classroom. And as a teacher, that's important to me, because I wanna make sure that holistically, their experience is enriching, and that they are getting what they need culturally, because the classroom can't always address all of that. And as well as emotionally, as Cici spoke about. So, the first person, she just talks about how she's able to reach her students through Ms. Cici, and when they are having troubles, or they need encouragement, they can go to her, and she'll like question with them. And I've seen this, sometimes I stop in, and she's probing the students, "So, why didn't you turn in that assignment? And what are the barriers, and how can I help you?" And then, Derek Davis, he is a great student, I don't know if you guys know him. We got stuck at the airport together in Atlanta, but we made it to the flight. But he is a great student, well-studied and versed. But he comes in every day, and he's just so quiet. But he'll come and sit in the room, and he just enjoys the atmosphere. It's something different from the several AP classes he's in. And he's able to, like, he's not very, he's more of an introvert. So, this gives him an opportunity to ask Ms. Cici questions, or talk, or get to know his peers and things like that. So, that's been nice to see. Diamond Davis, she is a volunteer, she was a tutor. She came in, she immediately clinged to Ms. Cici's infectious personality. She just felt like she can look up to her. She was African-American, and she just felt like Ms. Cici left a lasting impression on her, and so much so, that she wished that she had a program like this when she was in high school, because she saw how much it benefited the students. And it also benefited her in her studies, and inspired her to take a different direction in what she was studying in school. Ms. Sessine, her classroom is right next to Ms. Cici's room. And she had some students that moved from the college prep to the AP prep classes, from the college prep to the AP prep classes. And she just felt like Ms. Cici supported them in that transition, and made them feel like they can do it and achieve. And she also admired seeing Ms. Cici around the building. She spoke about how, because this is just a snippet of what she said, but she spoke about how she loved seeing her engaged in the activities with the kids, getting out there with them, dancing with them, or, you know, having different programs and seeing her presence in the building. Okay, and so, now, we have a few students here that are going to give their perspectives. So, I'll have Deja Hines and Elijah Jones, you guys can come up together. And then, after, we'll have Ameris Rodriguez. Yes, and then, after that, we'll have Latte Dumas. And we saw her on the slide earlier, and she has worked with MEP more than, yeah, five years. I met her when I first came, but they'll all come up, so you can just come up next. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deja Hines, and I'm a junior at Urbana High School. I just got into the MEP. I just got into the MEP program this year. And I remember I got a pass to Ms. Cici's class, and I didn't know what was going on. I thought I was in trouble or something. But the first thing she asked is pretty much like, what I needed help with in class. I was struggling in anatomy. And she made sure that she had some type of way of connections or whatever, to help me be able to get help with my work and make sure that I was on task. Now, I come into her class every day and lunch. And we talk about life situations, relationships, schoolwork. And she always checks on my grades every time, to make sure that my grades are where they're supposed to be. She has really affected me, because I hate going to the lunchroom. I hate being around a whole bunch of people. So, when I go in there, I know that I can go in there and chill. If I'm having a bad day, we can talk. And it's just a huge outlet, and she's impacted me a lot. And on the trip to Atlanta, she put me in a room with a bunch of girls. And that was a, wow, that was an experience. But I did learn how to, yeah, get along with other females, and learn how to compromise, so, yeah, I really appreciate that.
What's up, everybody? My name is Elijah Jones, I'm a ninth grader at Urbana High School. And basically, what she said, I just got involved with MEP this year too, because I used to see Cameron going there all the time. And I don't like going to lunch either, so, I like going in there, it's comfortable, and I can get my work done and focus. And I know I can come in there and talk to Ms. Cici, even if it's like a situation outside of school. So, I just like going in there. And, yeah, we plan stuff too, so. Oh, yeah, that's it.
Hello, my name is Ameris Rodriguez. I am vice president of Latino Club. Sorry, I have a really quiet voice. And I'm also part of the African-American Club, and I enjoy them both a lot. In African-American Club, I feel very accepted. And I really like it, because my best friend is in there. And we're both having a good time in both clubs, because she attends Latino Club as well. When we went to the Atlanta trip, it was very interesting to me to see all those colleges be historically black. And it was really inspiring to me. And I really wanna thank Ms. Cici for allowing me to go. Thank you. She's a role model to me, I really do look up to her. And she's been so helpful to me. And she's like a mentor to me, and I really do appreciate her.
Can I move this? Okay, so, my name is Latiana. I am, well, I'm currently a junior at U of I, but I've been involved with this club for about, African-American Club, for about five years. I started, like, I started in the club when I was a junior in high school, and I just continued it while I was in college. But I just wanna say that, since I've been around for five years, I've seen three different people in the same position as Ms. Cici, and nobody has done it better than she has done it at all. Like, coming into there, she just had connections with everyone. Like, when I first met her, I didn't even really know her like that, but I remember her from the office, and she always checked in on me, like, always. And she didn't even know me. And just, this position is very important for these kids, because she's like a social worker to them. Like, she can come in, and like any situation, and she can talk to, and she's relatable. It's not someone who, like, maybe has a master's in social work, but it's definitely someone who does the work and who understands these kids. So, I think her position is just, is powerful and very needed in this school. So, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
I did not coach these kids on what to say. I wanted them to be as authentic as they want it to be, as they need it to be, and they had me in tears. Any questions, comments, or concerns at this time?
Yes, you left off one part. I remember a phone call when you were trying to get prom dresses. So, you also, for kids that cannot find prom dresses, you call around and do that. We really appreciate you, Cici.
Thank you so much.
I knew from the beginning that you had it in you to help all children. And just continue to work, because cultural competency is very important when they leave the school. And if they don't get it at the school, where are they gonna get it? So, this is the best place to learn, and then, they could be more productive and be able to relate to some cultures, because there are a lot of people that need it that didn't get it, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I really appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Any other questions?
I did what she said, thank you very much.
Thank you. I have journals from our Atlanta trip, if you guys are interested in seeing what the students wrote about the trip. And before I end, I just wanna say, as far as resources, funding would be great for the MEP program. Just to be able to feed the kids and give them snacks every day, just to motivate them to work, at least, you know, I'd appreciate anything. But thank you again for having me, and I have the journals if you need them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our students for our Mental Health Awareness Day recap are not here yet. So, we'll go back to the administrative reports. And when they get here, we'll go ahead and move them up. So, our first administrative report is Matt Stark for our UHS Planning Update.
Good evening, I'm Matthew Stark, Principal of Urbana High School, and been asked to come to kinda give you an update on progress that we have made towards, as we look at the disparities and the issues that have been before the board for the last few meetings. In looking at this, I wanna first start with, again, the why, and I think that's important to continually look at the why. We have an over-representation of students of color in discipline, and under-representation of students in academic excellence in our school. Throughout the last four years, the high school staff has continued to do data digs in the month of May, and have continued to look at those numbers. There is not a surprise or a shock by staff that have been at the high school for any longer, as long as they've been there the last four years, about some of those numbers. It's why there's been lots of different things tried. There's been bridge programs in Comp 9, there's been summer math programs to work to make academics more accessible, that has been restorative practice. Twenty-first Century, when I first got there, was very much in an activity-oriented program, and that has been transformed into much more of an academic support-level program. So, there have been a number of things that have been worked on and gone after to address those disparities, and trying to fix, if you will, that problem. In the course of doing this, you've seen numbers over the last three years. If you go farther out, and you see numbers over the last ten years, you see numbers that have declined. But again, that is not to diminish the disparity that exists. And so, within that disparity is a need for a systems change. And within that systems change is a change of philosophy from being reactive to things that happen and trying to be proactive. I would highlight, two Fridays ago, there were potential five fights in the high school. You won't see a data piece on any of those fights, because they didn't happen. Because deans and administrations and other people went around and worked to be, to defuse those. We had students who came forward and things along those lines. As we build relationships and continue to increase and improve relationships among our students and staff, that's a proactive way of doing it. It's trying to create a system that captures those kinds of things. So, as we started talking about this, and we look at the disparity when it comes to student numbers, what's been done as we've gone through this? I put together a very aggressive PowerPoint presentation that had lots of different things in it, and highlighted that to our school improvement team, to our department chairs, to our faculty, to two parent meetings, one with a general parent meeting, and one specifically, thanks to Lucia Maldonado, a Latino meeting as well. I've met with staff members in groups, I've also met with individual staff members, I met with students in groups, I've met with individual students as well. There's been a lot of feedback. There have been a lot of three-by-five cards and post-it notes, and pages and pages and pages of questions and comments that have been made. There have been things to the high school administration, there's been feedback to the central office administration, there have been feedbacks to members of you as a board. A lot of, the thing, I guess I'm here tonight to say, a lot of that feedback has been heard. There's been a talk of collaboration, and how do we build things, and how do we go forward things? A lot has been heard, and an overwhelming piece to say, "We need to get this right." It can't be just, okay, we throw something out, it needs to be done right. And so, I think that is an overwhelming piece on that. So, as we go forward, I think there are two issues that are before us. First is a need of a systems change. And one of the things that's come back in the feedback piece is safety. It is the first priority of administration for the safety for our students and our staff in our buildings. That is not, that is not lost on me, that is not lost on anybody that is in administration. That is the number-one priority. Nothing, everything else is secondary to that throughout this process. What we currently have as far as safety and any structure going forward has to keep that at its forefront. That continues to be the case. I want to assure the board, the central office administration, the public, and our staff, and our students, that that is the primary concern, is safety is first. And so, that's one of the things we continue to look at and go through. We have three individuals who've served in the role of dean, who have done a tremendous job on things. A lot of things get lost. Yes, there have been, yes, there are errors, yes, there are mistakes, but overall, there's a lot of things that they have done beyond the job description. Dr. Owen has highlighted that, that has been highlighted in many different meetings. Many people have talked about the three individuals that serve those roles. They have gone above and beyond in a lot of the things that exist in their job description. We need to capture that. And my hope is, as we go through that, we try to keep those individuals in capacities as they have built relationships and help to bridge, and help to assist students in those relationships. I met with the deans on Thursday of this past week, and asked them to continue to look through the job descriptions as we look to transform what we're going to do as a school, and look and take out the exclusionary ideas out of that, out of their job descriptions, and what do we need to do. In the heart and soul of this is looking for ways to empower students, and to help students to activate services that help them overcome obstacles that are either in our schools, or out in their homes, or in our community, to overcome obstacles to success. That is paramount if we are going to make a difference on this. And as we've gone through this, the teaching staff, as they've gone through these questions, and as we've talked to the school leadership team, and as we talked about a variety of things, three elements became very clear. A need for professional development, and a need to look at the classroom level of things, of how we do things. Many years ago, that predate me, there was a class committee that created strategies of how to work within classroom behavior and academic concerns that teachers would have, as a collaborative effort. It's working to expand that, and expand that in a way in which, what is teacher-managed behaviors? What are teacher-managed behaviors with support? Teachers have an active role. The single greatest group that exists in our high school is the teaching staff. They see those students every single day. They have the greatest ability to make an impact, more so than a dean, more so than administrator, more so than a counselor, is a teacher who sees a student every single day, and empowering their students to work with those teachers, and to do restorative practice and things as we go through this. James Warren, who is a clinician within our school, has commented on numerous meetings with me, as he's talked to teachers, of how they are hungry for information, which is another piece that the teachers have asked for, is more data, not just quantitative data, but qualitative data as well. Needing to know more of what their students are going through, needing to know what are the issues that students are needing to face and address, and how to overcome those. Within that is a need for professional development. This past Monday, through our TCI trainers that are part of our district, that we have TCI trainers that are trained through our district, we went through de-escalation training as entire staff. We wanna repeat that in come, fall. At Wiley Elementary School, there was trauma-based response. I'm probably saying that a little wrong, but how do we deal with trauma-based, how, trauma-based things that our kids go through? How do we address those things? It's not a matter of letting kids do whatever they want, but talking about how do you proactively help a student solve those problems and give them the skills through social, emotional learning to be able to do those and hit those marks? We have some very talented individuals within our school to be able to do that. If we take exclusionary practices away from the deans and we take that away and we make that part of an administrative role, some things that need to happen, and I'm asking the board not to necessarily approve tonight, but to consider adding an assistant principal to the high school. What that will do is, as we do exclusionary practice, that means that would have to come through an administrator, not as a rubber stamp, but as an actual investigation into whether exclusionary things are necessary and how to activate the supports. It will also do, the other part that an additional assistant principal do is to take off some of the administrative tasks of our school counselors as they box up and plan for SAT and do all those things, is to take some of that load off of our, our school counselors who have social, emotional training as part of it. I spent about an hour and a half meeting with Kevin Flores, who is our, who is our lead of, lead, uh, school counselor and talking about how a lot of things that we're talking about, he, not only himself, but the staff have training in and how do we use those supports to do that and to take some more of those administrative tasks off of their, off of their plates? This is about empowering teachers, about empowering students, and about empowering a school that needs to address the needs to, to make, to eliminate the disparity that exists, which is the third item that the, the staff is absolutely adamant about. And that is taking a look at data, not in an annual report, not in a once-a-year kind of thing, but what kind of data markers do we need on a monthly basis to see, are we moving the marks, are things being addressed, and make it a dynamic system that addresses those issues? So those are things that we are working on. I said there were two issues. There's a second issue in this. This is hard work. You talked about, there was a number of speakers who came up tonight and talked about courage and talked about hurt feelings and talked about lack of trust and talked about brokenness that exists within our schools and within our staff and in our students as well. How do we rebuild that? I don't know that I have all the answers to it, but I want to tell you, five years ago, I sat before this board and agreed to be the principal, you, you agreed to make me the principal of Urbana High School. The thing that attracted me to Urbana High School is the, is the core principle of what we exist as a community and what we exist as a school district, and that is relationships. It is the single greatest way to break down barriers. It's the single greatest way to do that. And as we go and we bring, we hit to our core, which is the relationships we have, is how we overcome the obstacles that exist for our students. Not just our, we talk about a lot of, we've seen a lot of disparity of our, our students of color and how they do, how they have, how those disparities exist. They are all our students. Every single one of them. And to categorize groups of students and those kind of things is to highlight things. But when you look at those numbers, those numbers do not look like numbers to me. Those numbers are faces. And those faces, as we do things, I, I sat before this board earlier this year and talked about a school improvement plan in which I asked for a hundred percent graduation, because I will tell you right now, I know every single one of the kids who doesn't walk across that stage. I know who they are and I know the story behind it. And there's a lot of work done. I think it is important to know that as we go through this, that as we are to overcome this, it is critical for us, for not only our students and our staff as well, to work together and to build those relationships as we do this. At a recent staff meeting, I was told that I, I say lots and lots of words. And sometimes in all those words, things get lost. So let me conclude with this. In summary, we are looking for a way to keep the individuals that have been deans into a new, new role that are proactive in a way to address the social, emotional, and proactive way of dealing with issues that come up. Not in exclusionary way, but in a proactive way. We're, I'm asking for a shift to exclusionary practices, to administration, and to, and additional of an ass, um, assistant principal to better support teachers to, in order to help them better help and support our students, to have those things. We are going to continue to look ways to maximize our social, emotional supports of the people we currently have and, and do not be surprised if I come before you again and ask for more social, emotional support of what we need. Not only through professional development, but also through individuals as well. As we've gone through this process, and there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of emotion as part of this. At the core of this is our students. Our students, I'm a idealist in the fact that I believe that education is the way to give you the opportunity for whatever it is you want to see next. And anytime that a student is unsuccessful in our school is something we need to pay attention to and look at. They have a responsibility in that, we have a responsibility in that, families have a responsibility in that, and the community has a responsibility in that. And figuring out a way to get those groups all to work together for the betterment of our students is an important piece. The last thing I'll say is this. I went to a professional development that existed for families that was put on a couple of years ago in our Commons for District-wide. And the speaker there talked about, not only is the school and the parents a partnership, but he called it a covenant relationship. Our parents send us the most important thing that they have in their world. Some of you or many of you are parents yourselves, many of the people watching and our staff are parents as well. The parent, the kids that we send to our schools are the most important commodity that we have. And figuring out to how to honor that covenant relationship and make it so that parents feel they have more of a greater say, students feel like they have a greater say, and staff are empowered to help our students and to, and to meet the needs that they have are critical pieces as we move forward. So that is our update. I do not have a presentation, I do not have job descriptions to hand you. We are working on those things. It is critically important that as we come into the end of the school year, that as we leave, that staff and students know that we have a plan in place to try and help them. And so their voices have been heard. And as we look to do this, I hope to at the next board meeting, kind of sketch out that plan for you and how that will look. So, any questions by the board?
I just want to say something. Uh, the one thing that I have difficulty with is the clinical piece. You can't turn a person who has an education into a clinical person. That takes lots of hours, lots of times. They need to understand neurology, neurobiology, they need to understand the brain and what trauma's doing. That assistant principal, that's fine, but these kids, from what I gather, need a go-to person. A person that they can go like Cece. And not all those kids are gonna be in Cece's group. So I'm hearing from the children that they need somebody that they can say, my water was turned off. So I didn't have a bath for two days. Somebody can say, well, let me see if I can connect you with some resources. Some of these kids do not feel comfortable in talking. Some of the parents don't even feel comfortable in talking too. So my concern is if, I'm, I'm all go with everything, but just make sure when you hire these people or when you do these changes, that clinical piece is the biggest piece right now with that, what's going on. And so you can take a trauma-informed, three-hour course, that's not gonna do it. So I'm just saying, we're gonna need more in-depth professional development in that area. Whoever you hire, maybe if they could have some of that background in there because of what we dealing with. And I'm talking about all children.
Right.
So, uh, can you give me a response about that?
Sure, absolutely. So one of the reasons to, and this is why, this is where meeting with Kevin Flores was a very informative meeting. Our school, our school counselors and the different-
Kevin Flores?
Kevin Flores is the, is one of our school counselors. We have four in the guidance department. So one of the things that the, the school counselors have as part of their background is a lot of the things that you are talking about. But when we have them boxing up SAT and when we have them scheduling classrooms and we have them doing a lot of those administrative things, those, those pieces take, take time to do all those things. And if we have the ability to take some of those pieces off of, off of their plate, we have people with, with exactly the background that you're talking about actually working in our schools right now. Saying that we may need more support and help on that, absolutely. But saying as we take the four counselors and we get them an opportunity to do, so that they can meet with students, so that we're not trying to figure out how to administer three-quarters of our building in SAT and trying to figure out how to do those kind of things, they need to be involved in it, but I don't know that they necessarily need to be the ones to put all this stuff together. They do it because historically, that's what's happened. And as I talked to him, we talked about plans. I also give Mr. Corson credit. Mr. Corson is our, uh, has moved over to our associate principal. He is over the school counselors and stuff. And even before any of this stuff started to happen, he talked about plans of how could we move some of the administrative tasks off the school counselors so they would have more opportunity to connect with kids? The bottom line is this, as we build those relationships, I absolutely agree with you, is there needs to be more training on those kind of things, but having some background. And again, I think it's important to note that the teachers have asked for not only quantitative, but qualitative data. When you know that your student hasn't had, has had the water turned off and you know those things and somebody, and that person has found that out and it's been communicated back to the teacher, and then they have a skill set that knows, okay, how do I adjust or how do I approach that? I think those are important pieces that are work and collaboration to be able to do that. There's not one simple answer to this. These are complicated problems and we go after it. It's one of the reasons we added, I think a couple of years ago, Todd Taylor came in, we added, and as a board, you added back in a second social worker. That didn't cut the caseload in half for the kids that we need to help. We have more kids and we're helping more kids because we have two social workers because we do that. But there are a lot of issues within our community and our kids are facing a lot of things. And creating more or having more adults or more ways in which kids can feel more comfortable to be able to address that is a critical piece as we come back in fall of how do we access the support mechanisms that we have in place?
And I do understand that. All I'm saying too, with that go-to person, if they come to that person and say the water's cut off, that doesn't, doesn't give the authority to call DCFS, because then you're gonna lose that and it's gonna spread over. So that person, they have to know, is gonna have that compassion. And in your counselors, uh, you have one of color?
Yes, we do.
In middle school and high school? You only have one? One of color. And it's how many?
The, the high school has four counselors. Tamela Motley, we hired last year.
And the middle school has three. Okay.
Benita, I want to, I guess I want to also say is when we have those things currently, when they've come to teacher or administrator or dean or a counselor or a thing else, Alicia Trizeis and Liz Rich, who are two of our social workers, have been very good at building networks. We also have a number of our special education teachers who've also built networks of additional supports. Uh, Dr. Owen and myself also sit on Urbana Rotary, who is, uh, who has done the, the Red Shoe Fund, has done that for a lot of years. To be able to, how do we, you know, where there's not a lot of questions asked of how do we take care of our students that run into those problems? So, yeah, we could always use more resources to do that. And certainly when we're hiring people, we're always looking for that. We're in the midst of hiring season right now and it's one of the things we're looking for, is to say, how do we do a better job of connecting with kids on all levels? You're welcome.
Other board members?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a-
You've got a green light on, so go.
I do, yes. Um, thank you, Mr. Stark. I, I share your strong belief in the urgent need to change our disciplinary structure. I mean, we've said that for some time, but I believe strongly that the only way to create a new system is to involve the teachers and staff in developing the new system. You know, buy-in is essential. Many agree that the approach that we took to making changes in our secondary disciplinary structure was flawed. It was too rushed and it didn't involve enough frontline staff. So I appreciate your course correction to sort of make up time. The course correction you made and, and continue to make at UHS so that we can, we can move together in changing the disciplinary structure, which needs to happen. My question to you is, can, you know, can you speak to the degree of buy-in that you're feeling at UHS in making those important and necessary changes in our disciplinary structure? Buy-in by those who we need to have at the table, the teachers and staff?
That is a complicated answer.
Yeah, I know.
And I think what, the other part that also complicates that answer right now is the time of year we're in, because if everything were going well, this is month of May and graduation is looming and we're at the end of the year and those kind of things. So the normal year-to-year cycle of stress is, is at its highest at this point in the year. I, I would say is I believe we're working towards that end when we have things like teachers making recommendations of how would we do teacher, what are teacher-level, uh, uh, um, ways to address things? What are teacher needs for, with support and what does that support look like and what should be administrative? I believe we were making progress on that, to that end, but as far as where is buy-in right now, I think that is, that is difficult to judge at this point, because I think at the end of the day, the thing that teach, this teaching staff wants to know is what does this support look like or what does this look like when we do things? We've had, and the reason I started with safety is because one of the things is concern is if I have an incident that is unsafe in my classroom, what happens? Am I left on my own? And I want to assuredly tell you, as I sit here before you tonight, that is not the case now, nor will be the case in the future. The fact that how we respond to things and the things that we do to respond to things, I, I, I will say is that i- is not completely known by everybody on staff of all the things that get done behind the scenes. The goal that is always the case is, I want you, as a, as a teacher or as a student, I want you to know that it was a great day, even if we had a lot of things that we had to address from a safety standpoint. As we continue to go forward, I think we begin to make progress on that, but to, to sit here and say, here's how many people bought in, I think this is, this is, the part that I introduced was, I talked to the staff yesterday about. So I think I got some very positive feedback as we're doing things. I think it is important to note is that a lot of the staff know that we need to address this problem. The how is, is, is some of the, this, the, the frustration piece maybe on this, uh, but the need for addressing the problem is, I think, is, is across the board.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other board members? Whichever of you two is gonna go, turn your mic.
Yeah. Um, have you been getting a feedback from students as well on all of this? What have you been hearing from them?
So as we, as we talk to students, there's a, it, it runs, it runs a, um, uh, runs a gamut of, of feedback. Obviously wanting some things of more supports and things, but also fearful as people change positions. And I think you heard it tonight, as an example, in, with Cece, as you talked about kids as they build those connections. We have, we have students who've built connections with our three deans that have made really strong connection with it and feeling like they're losing that person, uh, is, is dis, is disheartening, because it takes time to build those relations, relationships. Having, having a system that is more proactive and can help address problems and giving students an opportunity to address those problems in a way to be express themselves is critical. In the research that has been done, the single greatest way to have a safe school is to empower your student body to feel like they have a say-so. We're in the National Institute of Justice, as we're doing, we're trying, we're doing an app development that has been ongoing that Laura Courts and Jennifer Heinhorst have been part of to do that, those kind of things. We're talking about how this, how an app would be another way of contacting. We've done a variety of ways of trying to contact you. We have ways to, you, you take your phone and you can, I, and I don't remember what the little bit thing is, but you can, and it'll pop up forms so that you can do those things. We're trying lots of things. I think the critical pieces we go forward is to talk about how do we activate systems of support? I will tell you is that Cece's done a good job of making the word out, but some of our kids didn't know we had a MEP program until their junior year that we've heard prior to this. You know, there are supports placed. I didn't know we had a social worker. I didn't know we had a psychologist. I didn't know I could go to my school counselor for that. So it's talking about how do we make this more accessible? And it's, it's not as simple as saying, well, we told you at this point and we told you at this point, or there was this pamphlet. Generally, when people need resources is when they start to pay attention to when they need resources. And so it's trying to figure out ways to make that more accessible to them. And so the students are gonna be critical in their voice in this. And one of the things I hope to is trying to figure out more ways to have structured student voice and things so that we can say, what works for you? It's no different than when we do a PTSA meeting and we've had 10 people show out, even though we've had a, uh, it's been sent out an email or voicemail blast or something, you know, it's, it's asking the people to show up, how do we get more people here? What are things that we need to do? We've done a variety of things. Uh, you know, Janice Mitchell at the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, I did presentation there. Lucia Maldonado at, at the Ivanhoee subdivision, we did a meeting there. Is going out and trying to find different ways to reach out, not only to students, but also to parents. It's, you know, this year, the, the central office administrative team put together a lunch and learn kind of thing so that there, I had somewhere between 40 and 50 students show up to just talk to what was going on. It's trying to figure out ways. I echo Cece's comment that if the more money we have in the budget for feeding them, the greater chance that we have of having them show up. So, um, I, I think those are important pieces, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to thank you for all the energy and time you put into this. This is an exceptionally important issue facing the district. And, um, I want to say I fully support, uh, you know, moving as quickly as institutionally possible on this. And I understand there's so many constraints regarding budget and, and trying to get buy-in, not just from teachers and staff, but with the broader community. So to that point, I was wondering what efforts are going to be made to, to reach out, not just to the parents, but to the broader community as well, to kind of communicate about what's going on at UHS?
I, I think, uh, you, and again, sitting here and not having thought about the broader community pieces, I think the, the board meetings become one of those places, but we have, we have done open, you know, our PTSA meetings are open. We had community members that showed up to our PTSA meeting who had some questions. A couple of people had questions. I invited people to just come to, come to those meetings. So, uh, I would say it's probably making those more open to not just parents, but community members who want to attend. We had a, a woman who attended one of the PTSA meetings who has lived next to the high school for, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood 30 years and hasn't set the, in, a foot into the high school since she first moved here, came to one of our meetings because she heard about those kind of things. So it's continually doing those outreaches and putting things out there and information out there. But I'm also a big believer in, while we do blogs and we do Facebooks and we do Twitters and we do all those kind of things, I, I'm still a huge believer in- I'm still a huge believer in face-to-face is the way to do it. And again, I think that's how you build relationships. I think that's how you get to know people. And those have been the, despite all of our technology, those have been the most beneficial pieces that I've seen.
Other board members? Or anyone else wish to speak?
Matt, I want to thank you. I'm particularly pleased that at this point in time, the decision-making process and how you're moving forward is being driven at the building level. And it's, I know that the impetus came from the central office and the goal that was put out there came from the central office. But I appreciate the fact that the process is now working better than it was two months ago at the building level. And that we're making progress. And I think the key thing that Paul used was we're moving forward at the pace, at the institutional, at an institutional pace. Is that the word you, what was?
Moving as quickly as institutionally possible.
Thank you. And so I hope that people in the public need to know that the board received a substantial amount of communication about this issue. And I think that you've repeatedly tonight said that that input was heard. And I have to agree that the input that we got, none of it said, "Don't fix the problem." None of it. Not one person said, "Don't fix the problem." The concern was how were we gonna fix the problem? And I'm glad to see that you're addressing that in a collaborative fashion with the people that are most directly involved, including the students, of course, the staff. And I'm also happy that we're taking a look at what we have that is working or the skills that we have in the schools that we're maybe not properly utilizing. And we're figuring out ways to use the skills that our people that are there right now can bring to the table that they've not been able to bring to the table for a variety of reasons, whatever those reasons are. So I'm glad to see that. I want to thank you for that.
Yep. And I would just say also emphasize again is I'm very impressed as we, as a staff, as they met and you talk about professional development and need for training and the things, is they're very specific on the things that they need and want in order to do better work. And I think probably the single greatest one that they said is needing more information about students and background and having much more communication about the kids that are in front of them. Because they don't, and Benita's point, we don't always know that the student is homeless or those kind of things. And knowing what that is and then still holding kids to a high level of expectation, but also understanding what the barriers and the challenges that they face is a critical piece to that.
I would assume there's some issues of student privacy that you're having to deal with too. In order to, I mean,
That's why I think it's-
Everybody wants those facts about themselves known.
That's one thing I was gonna touch on too, John.
Well, but I think it also is important that as we get more professional development and we get some things is, and I agree with Benita, that a three-hour training does not make you a clinician or those kind of things. But having a much greater awareness piece of it is important as you go forward to helping students be more comfortable to find ways to share those obstacles. And again, at the end of the day, the students are the most important thing that we have. And figuring ways to empower them and having them be able to access those resources is a critical part to, not only the growth as a high school student, but growth beyond high school as well.
One thing I was just gonna say, Mr. Starks, was I think the system we had earlier, the students felt very comfortable. Most of them that I've heard feedback from. And just having that one go-to person, whether it be a dean, which most of them have a strong relationship with because they knew that if they spoke to the dean, they didn't have to go and repeat their story 10 different times. The dean would point them in the right direction. Or maybe it was a teacher. But I think the building trust is the most important. And I really liked what you said about our students, you know, the dean part. I'm just saying that was like, some of the students that I heard from, that was their go-to person, you know, for help, for different needs that they might have.
Every year that we have staff turnover, is just the general nature of staff turnover, we have students who lose relationships with staff members because they've moved on or those kind of things. Again, I think it's one of the core principles of this district. And I don't think I'm, you know, I think that is, that is part of the reason I'm here is those relationship things are key. And the fact that we have SRSs in a hallway that have built relationships with a kid or a teacher or a TA or a secretary or an MEP coordinator or an administrator or a dean or a counselor, those are key elements of how this works. And the more, you know, it's why the mentoring one-to-one program is such a powerful piece in our school district is because, again, it's building a relationship and having somebody that's going to advocate and help you understand how to, not only advocate for you, but also help you understand how you can advocate for yourself.
Thank you.
Other comments from the board? Matt, thank you. 7.02 is substitute pay review. Jacinda?
Good evening. My name's Jacinda Cromer. I am Director of Human Resources. And I thank you for the opportunity to be here in order to present to you something to consider and hopefully accept, the idea of raising our substitute teacher and substitute TA pay. I'll just get right into it. So my request tonight is for you to increase the pay rates in order to really recognize our hard-working subs. Some of them are here tonight, still are here tonight. Consistent subs, kind of in a unique pay structure. It's a little bit different than how we've done it in the past and I'm really excited about because I think it will attract and retain our substitutes, new substitutes and current substitutes through flexible levels of pay, which I'll detail in just a few moments. And we'll also encourage a larger commitment to subbing from our sub pool. We have several subs who will just sub here and there, one or two days per each school year. And that can really hurt the culture of the building, hurt sometimes safety. It doesn't help with professional development, all sorts of issues with that, so. One reason we're doing this now is that we're really noticing that substitute fill rates have decreased over the past three years. When I came into this position three years ago, we implemented a new program called ASOP. It is now called absence management. So it runs really good reports for us and can track all sorts of data. In that first year of implementation, 2015, 2016, that actually came at the same time that we decided to do a pay raise. So at that point, we went from, I think Gail Jeffries came before the board and asked to go from $95 to $105 per day. We really appreciated having a 92% fill rate. So fill rate in substitute land means you take the total number of absences that are put into that system that requires subs and you look at how many actually are accepted and filled by substitutes. So 92% of those absences were covered, meaning in that year, only 8% were left open. And those are actually really good numbers. And that's overall. That means many of the times, we had 100% days, which is always a good thing to come into in the morning when you find out that every single assignment in the district is covered by a substitute. We have not had that once this school year. We now have dropped last year to 89%, which was still a pretty good year. And then this year, it's dropped significantly to 77%. We've had better days than 77, but we've had worse days than 77. Today, we were sitting at 69% coverage, which meant 30% of our TAs and teachers that needed subs that were out, were not covered. And so you've got buildings scrambling and all sorts of issues that are on my next slide. Well, actually, this kind of breaks it down by month to month. And it compares all of them rather than just the overall fill rates. So the green line is our line for this year. And it shows that we all kind of start pretty good in August, all three years. And then this year, we slowly dropped down to below the 80s right around second semester and have stayed there pretty steadily. So that line is pretty significantly lower than our past two years. That, to me, is a flag that it's probably time to consider doing something a little different. And pay, of course, is one way to do it. But rather than just increasing the pay, I'm hoping that kind of implementing a new structure to pay is really gonna also do the trick too. So other than having a low fill rate, lots of things come kind of with that. Heard a lot about Matt Stark talking about professional development needs and what we're gonna have to do in order to help provide resources and time for that restructuring at the high school. There's restorative practice work that needs to be done in all buildings. And, you know, mentoring new teachers when we have that kind of turnaround. And that professional development sometimes gets hurt because teachers will come thinking, oh, I'm gonna go to a session where I'm gonna do maybe TCI training or I'm gonna go to a restorative practice session or work with my instructional coach or meet with my mentor. And then they come to school and find out that they don't have a substitute to cover their class. Or maybe they had a substitute, but somebody else is out sick and they have to do kind of this last-minute swap and cancel because they know that person is in the building and available. That's kind of what you have to do. And so we're hearing lots of frustration about that PD getting canceled and people are not getting what they need. And, you know, it's just really hard for our teachers and our TAs. Special education has been challenged too because there are lots of TAs that are out. Not more than anything else, but it's harder to fill those TA spots. And those TAs provide minutes that are required on IEPs. They certainly are able to figure out how to handle that and still provide those minutes. But they shouldn't have to deal with that on a regular basis like they do. So that's been a challenge. Student discipline, when you have less people in the building than you're supposed to have. You know, if you have 10 unfilled assignments and you don't have the subs, you're merging classes, you've got a principal covering, you have maybe classes kind of getting canceled or things shuffled around, TAs kind of filling in, doing some sort of interesting last-minute things. There's just less people there to help supervise kids, talk to kids, kind of instruct kids, you know. I heard a lot about how students were central in Matt Stark's thing. And that's, of course, the case. We can't do that. We're gonna struggle consistently if we have these unfilled spots. School culture and climate is taking a hit because people, again, are getting frustrated that they write the lesson plans or not getting the coverage that they need even when they're sick. Teacher prep periods are not being used because they are actually filling in for their colleagues. So we've had a lot of secondary teachers, and even at the elementary, when they've got their prep period, they get kind of called over by the secretary and asked, "Will you cover?" And so you might have a seventh grade social studies teacher. That first hour is taught by the eighth grade science teacher. And then second hour is taught by the PE teacher. And then third hour, because those are the prep periods that kind of line up. So of course, there's not consistency there. It's nice to have a teacher in there, but those teachers should be able to use their prep period in order to prep, right? Figure out what they're gonna teach the next day, grade, collaborate with their peers, look at student work, talk about, talk to the counselors or talk to the social workers, all the things that we need to do in order to implement the successful school day. Principals and leaders are subbing in their classrooms quite a lot. I've got data on that in one of my coming slides. And that's hard for them because they should be leaders in their building and doing instructional leadership and using their time in other ways. It doesn't mean they shouldn't be in the classrooms. Of course, they should be. But not necessarily in the capacity of subbing because there's nobody else to kind of fill that space. And because of all of this, of course, ultimately, classroom instruction is taking a hit. Because there, it's not, you know, the lesson plans aren't able to be followed because they're kind of piecemealing things together and that's been a challenge. I think teachers are often writing lesson plans that are simpler because they think, well, I'm not gonna have a sub. Why should I spend three hours writing these lesson plans that's gonna continue my instruction? I'll just leave a video or something easy in case I don't have a sub. Then somebody kind of last minute can come in and cover that. So it's been difficult. So many challenges. These are just some of the ones that I thought of. I'm sure there are many others. So my proposal is, of course, to increase the kind of baseline rates. Right now, we pay 105 per daily rate. So you sub any number of days, you get 105 for each of those days. Of course, there's long-term rates. So if somebody really takes over maternity leave, three months, whatever, and they have to do the lesson planning and the parent-teacher conferences, those rates are much higher. They kind of match a little bit more of what an incoming teacher would get at step one. So this, I'm talking more about just kind of this daily sub rate. So I would like to increase that base pay from 105 to 110, so it's just $5. Three years ago, we made a $10 jump for that. So I just want to do $5, but that's because I want to add flexible levels of pay, which I'll explain here in a minute, in order to encourage more active subbing and a higher consistent pool. I also want to increase the starting hourly rate for substitute teaching assistants. Currently, it's sitting at 1250 per hour. And I want to up that initial rate to $13. I'm sorry, it says per day and that's not right at all. Thank goodness. We would definitely not get anything filled. Per hour. Implement four flexible levels of pay. I'll show that to you on the graph. It's a little bit easier to understand. And then I've got an example for you. And subs will really end up moving up or down on those levels based on how often they work during any given quarter. And so it's a very flexible kind of pay schedule and very responsive. So I know there are some districts who will kind of look at overall, oh, you work this much during one school year and then the next year, implement a higher pay. But often, that's not soon enough for a position like substitutes. If they found out, well, if I work a certain number of days during this quarter and I can get a higher rate on, I don't know, in second quarter, actually starts like October, October 1st, then it might encourage them to work more when we need them to work because that kicks in very quickly. So I'll bump to the table or chart. I think you guys have it in front of you, but, oh, good, it's in big color too. Good. So I've got four levels. We start with the 110. And then each level goes up just $5. So we have a 115 level, a 120, a 125. Same thing at the TA hourly. That's 13, 1350, 14 and 1450. And then we have permanent floaters in all the buildings. Those floaters report to school every day into that building. And they are just told by the secretary or the principal exactly where to go based on what's open. And they are used, used a lot. They are filling constantly and they can't plan their day like our other subs who get to pick and choose what they want to work. They get to report and they just do, oh, you're doing PE all day, but then you gotta run to science and you gotta do this. And they do what's the biggest kind of thing that needs to be covered in that day. So those permanent floaters report and work every single day, so I'm putting them at a higher rate. That's not really part of the four levels, but I did want to put it there so that you know that we do have permanent floaters in each building. This table or these four levels get activated using kind of this if-then table or this if-then statements underneath. So if I were a substitute next year, there's an example in the next one too. But, and I wanted to start working right away, first quarter, and I worked 15 days that quarter. Then the second quarter, I would level up and go to level two. And then I would immediately, second quarter, start making 115 for all of my days. And then if I put in my 15 days during level, sorry, quarter two, then I'd level up for third quarter and I'd get up to 120. And so then I have these ranges. So if they work between 5 to 14, they can maintain their level. If they don't work that often, they only work a few days each quarter, then they would go down. But of course, never below 110, which is still a very, I'm sorry, 1, yeah, 110, which is still a very competitive rate for this area. But we're trying to get people to really commit to Urbana more. We have several subs who work in multiple districts. And so if they knew, oh, wow, if I- And so, if they knew, oh, wow, if I could work more in Urbana and give my sub-days to them, I'm going to get a higher pay. And then, if you have a higher pay, you want to work more because you're getting more and you want to maintain that pay rate. So, I'm hoping this really will kind of encourage some excitement about taking and kind of keeping committed subs. So, on the example, because it always does, of course, come down to money. This is taking one substitute who works just the minimum fifteen days in order to increase their level each quarter. If I were a sub and worked first quarter at fifteen days next year, should you agree to accept this plan, then I would increase my pay to sixteen fifty versus if I just kept it at the one oh five, which is what it is now. So, it's not a significant difference, but you'll see it slowly gets to be more. This particular sub, it's a difference of seven hundred and fifty for one sub who decides to work just the fifteen days in order to kind of level up, which is not a significant difference either, especially when you start considering that, yes, you're going to pay more for subrates, but we're actually paying for things that are hidden expenses. So, for example, teachers who sub during their prep period, they get paid twenty-five dollars to use their time to sub. And so, I ran some reports in our payroll system. And so far this year, and that doesn't even count all of May and part of April, because those reports weren't accessible quite yet, we have paid over ten thousand dollars in just that teacher prep time. So, if we can get more subs working, that time, of course, there won't be opportunities to sub. I also asked the principals how often they've been subbing. And I have principals who've subbed in classrooms over sixty times. Not individually, collectively, I should say. So, over sixty times. And when you think about how much we pay a principal to be an instructional leader in our building and you add up their per diems, that's over fifty thousand. And I think that's a pretty low number because a low, I, I think it's a low estimate. I believe that it's higher than that. I didn't get everybody, so I just had to kind of estimate based on the responses that I got. And so, that sixty thousand dollars, that's not even really a hidden expense. Those are actual expenses. But all of these things on that earlier slide, all of these really come with hidden expenses, too. So, if our classroom instruction's being hit, if teachers are frustrated because they're not getting subs, and then they decide, you know, I'm done teaching or whatever, you know, you lose them. And then, you have to spend money on recruitment and retention and all that. That all comes with a price tag. It's hard to really put a dollar amount on that, but it certainly is there. So, the happier and better and more successful we can make this program, I think it's going to kind of pay for itself. So, I did some district comparisons because I'm sure people would be interested. I only have some on here, but Champaign currently pays one hundred to one oh five, but they do have bonuses that they implement. So, if they work a certain number of days for a semester or a quarter, then they get a fifty-dollar bonus, or actually, that's per month. And so, they're really trying to do the same thing. I like our plan a little bit better. I think it's, it keeps people more actively working so that they can maintain that pay rate. We do have some districts in this area who, who pay the same amount, like Tuscola and Rantoul, one ten and one fifteen respectively, and then some others that are close to that as well. So, we would be competitive. It is higher than some of the school districts near us. But, of course, you want that, too, because you want our subs to be working here. So, benefits of increasing the pay rate and hopefully implementing this kind of four levels of plan. Of course, you decrease your hidden expenses, and that's going to increase the value of your dollar. So, we're going to be making subs happy. We're going to be making teachers happy. We're spending it where it should be spent in this case rather than spending it on principals or other teachers kind of filling up their day when they should be doing it, spending their prep time or spending their time in different ways. Allowing principals to focus on their leadership, it's going to improve instruction because if we have a more consistent subpool, then I can spend more efforts working on professional development of those subs, bringing them in, teaching them about restorative practice, hopefully making them more part of their building. We've been slowly starting to do that with inviting them to Winter Institute. I want to do more of that. But it's really hard to do when I have subs who only work one or two days here or there. So, if I can get a more consistent subpool, then it's certainly going to help me be able to give targeted instruction and make them feel like they truly are part of the staff and provide them with what they need in order to improve student success. It's going to improve the professional development efforts because they won't have to be canceled and rescheduled and that sort of thing. It, of course, demonstrates appreciation for some really great subs who give us tons of their time and certainly deserve it. And we all know them dearly. Some of them are behind. And it's going to improve climate and culture. I mean, it's going to just do, I think, a bunch of great things. Of course, increase our percentages. So, just a few other little facts that you might want to know, and I have others if you have questions. We currently do have one hundred ninety-one active subs, or at least they are actively employed. They don't all actively work. About one hundred and fifty of them actively work. So, we have thirty to forty that have not worked yet this year. Some of those are retired teachers who kind of agree to sub if the right person kind of asks them, and that's understandable. So, of course, I'm going to say, of course, stay on the list. You know, you might be able to be used in certain capacities. We have over thirty subs. And I know of for sure thirty subs because the system tells me if there are school districts that also use our AESOP system or absence management, and they decide to link them, I can see where they work and how often they work in other districts. It's pretty cool. At least thirty of them do actively work in other districts. A third of our subs have been with us for longer than four years, which is pretty great. And a third of them have been with us two to three years. A third of them are in their first year. So, that's really good numbers to have that many who keep coming back and keep actively subbing, somewhat up to twenty-five years, which is incredible. Our last pay increase was three years ago, as I've already mentioned. And there is sort of a method to my madness. You probably wonder, okay, why did I decide on the fifteen days per quarter? I took all of the absences that happen in a year that require subs, divide by all of the subs that we have active. I always kind of shoot for about two hundred. We're a little under that mark right now, but I need to get hiring more. It's the end of the year, so people start kind of dropping off. And I said, if every sub, you know, how many days would every sub have to work in order to get near or at a hundred percent fill rate? And the answer's about thirteen per quarter. So, I know that's not a perfect science or a perfect math because they don't always land in the right quarters. But hopefully, if I can get people kind of excited about working at least fifteen days, then we're going to certainly increase our numbers. I believe that is it, other than just taking whatever questions you have and kind of putting the request back out there for you to consider. I don't think you're voting on it tonight. I think we'll come back and do that on a different night, but I will take whatever questions or concerns that you have.
Jacinda, I have two.
Yes.
Since you are so good at running the math, can you tell me what the overall cost of the district is of the increase? And you may not have that answer tonight. You may have to prepare it later. But what is the, we budget X amount for substitutes every year. How much more in total would we need? That's question one. Question two is in particular for the TA. How does this compare to the starting pay of our full-time TAs?
Okay. So, the starting pay for the full-time TAs, I guess I don't have that number off the top of my head.
You may have to answer this.
I may have to answer it the next time or provide it to you. I do know that the thirteen fifty is just a little under what, I'm sorry, the thirteen dollars is just a little under what a ba, I'm sorry, high school step one of a TA would be for the next year. So, it does compare pretty closely, but let me get back to you on those numbers. It's hard for me to estimate.
There'd be a benefit difference, though, too, because somebody who's working for us full-time.
Absolutely. And so, they're getting benefits, they're getting sick time, they're getting insurance, all of that kind of stuff if somebody's a full-time employee versus a substitute.
And if they do work, the number of hours you're looking at, isn't the federal law such that if someone works thirty hours a week, they have to get health insurance? Have to be offered health insurance? Okay. So, at cost or their cost? At their cost?
And it's not, it is kind of an average. So, you can look at overall. And there are things I can do to limit the number of days that subs work, but we do often offer insurance because of that look-back period and try to determine how many subs kind of hit that mark. And so, each year, there are about ten to fifteen subs that we offer the insurance to. And I don't know that any have signed up any of the two to three years that we've been doing it under ACA.
It's pretty expensive.
Right. Yeah, it is. The overall increase in amount, I, I started to try to figure out that math, but it's hard because you don't know exactly how many subs are going to want to work certain number of days. So, if I use this here and I were to say, okay, if every sub works fifteen days a quarter, which would get us to a hundred percent, and, and followed this, that's seven hundred and fifty for each sub. And then, overall, I believe the math takes me to about a hundred fifty thousand extra dollars from this year one of implementation to this year. But not all subs are going to do that. We certainly do have subs that this won't motivate them to work sixty days in a year because we have some retired subs who, or retired individuals who really just want to teach and sub in high school math. And that's all they do. And everything, you know, the rest of their days, they're doing other great things in the community, and they're only going to work five days. They don't care about the money. So, many of them will just get the one ten and will never bump up.
But you might be able to come up with, like, the best-case scenario where everybody gets there. Obviously, that won't happen, but you can kind of get a maximum range that we would expect.
Sounds like the maximum is a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand in year one, yes. And I, I believe that would basically continue to mirror itself in future years.
Cautioning that five dollars a day doesn't sound like much. We're, we're a big district, it's a big budget.
Yes. True.
Union negotiations are coming.
Yes.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, is a chunk of change.
Right.
We want to remember to subtract out the costs that we know we have with the ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Paid to teachers who work their planning.
I understand.
Yeah.
So, give me the best, to me, you say the best-case scenario is a hundred and fifty, that's the worst-case scenario, it's going to cost the district a hundred and fifty thousand. What's, what's the, what's the real budget? And you'll have to bring Carolyn on this, I'm sure.
Yes.
We need to know what the real budget impact is because I'm sure this would become one of her budget assumptions as the next budget is prepared.
Yes.
On, on the whole, I'm supportive of doing something to get us away from seventy-seven percent and dropping.
Yeah.
And get us somewhere. I'm also, Terry, you've come and talked to us about substitute pay and about the fact that we have, if we've had somebody that's worked for us for twenty-five years and they're basically earning the same amount as somebody who walks in the door who's never substitute taught before.
Right.
And has a bachelor's degree. I, I understand the, I understand and buy in to the fact that that's a situation that needs some resolution.
Yes, I completely agree.
So, I don't, I don't want you to take my comments about the budget to be that I'm against this.
Sure.
I just need to know what it is we're doing because we're going to have some choices to make. We had another request tonight that will cost the district a comparable amount of money. And the, the requests are just beginning. And I'm concerned about our budget, as you would expect me to be.
Sure.
All right. The other, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thanks for developing such a comprehensive system for improving teacher sub, teachers' subpay, which I too fully support.
Thanks.
The trend lines on the fill rates over the last few years was very interesting to, to see. Do you have comparable information on how, how the number of subrequests has changed from previous years?
I do, actually. And I should have put that on the slide. In two thousand fifteen and sixteen, so the first year that I have good data or easy, easily accessible data, we had eleven thousand ninety-four absences and vacancies put into the system that wanted subs. And so, that's not just on, that's for the whole year. It's not just for employees. It's also anytime we have a floater, anytime we need a collaboration sub, anytime we have a vacancy. So, all of those, any, anytime we need, have a request for a single day. So, just over eleven thousand. Last year, it was just under eleven thousand, so ten thousand nine hundred fifty-five. And this year, to this point, of course, we still have May to finish out. I do have some May data because there are some absences already put in the system for May. So, those are included in these, but any last-minute absences or sicknesses are not. We're sitting at ten thousand seven hundred forty-five.
So, it looks to be comparable.
It is, it is comparable, yes. Yeah. So, that number has not increased. And I don't, when I was looking at the month of May to try to figure out how much I'd think maybe they'd get added, we usually have about seventy absences or, or kind of openings for subs every day. And we might be sitting at about forty or fifty for some of those days. And you have to consider, lots of these are maternity leaves and, and FMLA leaves, things that are planned leaves, medical leaves. So, you might think, oh, why do we have forty already in May? You know, doctor's appointments or whatever, what have you. I don't think that this will jump up too much. It'll probably go over eleven thousand, but still comparable.
Great. Thank you, Jacinda.
On the district comparisons.
Yes.
Do you have any ideas on the last time each of these districts made an increase? And how, like, did they go five years? Are they doing it every year? That type of thing? Did you have any?
I don't have much data on that. I do know that when we went up to one oh five three years ago, Champaign also met that. So, right after us, just a couple of months after us, in order to stay competitive, I think they went to, well, they went to one hundred for like this first ten days. And then, after the tenth day, I believe that's how it works, and I could be mistaking that just a little bit. It goes up to one oh five for the eleventh and beyond days. So, they matched us. I don't know about these others. I do know that the Rantoul City Schools, that's not a new rate. I think that's a couple of years because I found it in a handbook that was created before now. I could try to find that information, but I'm not sure. I was just at a recent conference with a bunch of substitute coordinators last week, a training of people for the system, AESOP. And there are lots across the state, of course, somewhere in Chicago, that have much higher rates than us. So, it's not quite comparable, but we'll update their rates yearly or every two to three years, but not usually longer than that.
Do you have a sense of, you didn't mention the, the getting pay rate increases for things like, with other districts, like having a professional development or like in the, in the case of Elgin, that if they're special ed or bilingual trained, is that something that we already do? Or is that something that you see working into this plan? Or is your plan just to increase number of days, what, all that you had thought to implement?
The Elgin unit rates increase for not necessarily special ed or bilingual-trained, but for when substitutes take special ed and bilingual positions. And so, it was more for the position. We've done that a little bit in this district. For example, when we have TAs work in like long-term assignments or maybe a safety TA. So, it's a little bit different of a, or a harder type of position to fill, then that rate bumps up a little bit. Because we have levels now, I think it would be easier to kind of say, okay, this is a hard-to-fill position, let's bump you up to that next rate. So, we could certainly do that.
But it sounds like your rate's already kind of umbrella over that, those issues already.
Right.
So it takes care of that.
Yes, and I'm hoping that just by saying these levels and kind of encouraging people to work the days, they're gonna kind of take whatever assignments in order to meet those fifteen days. So it's getting the end of quarter one and you only have ten assignments. Are you sure you don't wanna hit fifteen and take these, so?
And then my next question about that was, would people maintain those levels that they're at with the start of a new school year? So if they'd worked in the very last quarter, their maximum number of days, and they hit, say, level three, come August, they're gonna start at level three again?
Yes. Well, it's whatever that quarter was before. So it's as if the summer didn't happen. So it would just roll over. So quarter one, we would look back at the last quarter unless they're a new sub. New subs start in at the entry level. So, and kind of have to work their way up, right? You would look back at the last quarter and say, okay, did you work more than fifteen? You can go up if you, if you maintained or go down. So it would continue, it wouldn't start over.
Okay, and does, does summer school count into that?
We don't use subs for summer school. They use lots of teachers who want the extra money. They have just sub teachers and they arrange it. They don't even use the program, ASOP or Absence Management. They just do it in-house.
Okay, thank you.
One more question, real quick. The other pieces, I guess, would be is how do you do sub evaluation? Because obviously, I think you'd wanna offer our best subs the opportunity to level up. So I was wondering how that process worked.
Well, the system does have a feedback feature, ASOP Absence Management, where teachers can provide feedback on the subs and how things went. So anytime that somebody gets a low rating, I get an automatic email. Doesn't help my email inbox. Actually, there's really not that many low ratings, so I shouldn't make you worried. So I could review that and decide, you know, does, does the sub need extra PD or support or what have you? That kind of rating doesn't necessarily play into these levels. However, it could play into the fact that we're gonna need building floaters. And, you know, if we have an excellent sub who gets high ratings, who works well in a building, then, you know, we'll hold little interviews and of course, you know, they get better feedback, they're a stronger sub. They're gonna be that go-to person to get hired as a building floater. So Terry Townsend is one of those and does an excellent job and is well-respected. And what's great about that is all the students know him and he knows all the students. And so he is truly one of the staff, so. So that's how it kind of plays in. Or of course, long-term assignments. So principals are always reaching out to me and the sub coordinator saying, okay, I've got a maternity leave coming up. Do you have any great subs? I'll look at feedback, I'll look at sub preferences. I will just think about things that I've heard and say, oh, well, these are some of the subs that I think have gotten really good responses or do very well in this. Or maybe they're skilled at math or English or whatever. Reach out to them and offer them, you know, a maternity leave. And of course, that rate goes up to about two hundred some because they're doing all sorts of lesson plans and work. They take on the true role. And so that's how, that also comes into play.
Thanks, Jacinda.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seven point oh three, French Dual Language Proposal Update.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Guadalupe Ricconi, the Director of Elementary Bilingual Programs. I'm here tonight to talk to you, to present you more information regarding French Dual Language Expansion Proposal. Particularly to discuss with you, again, the rationale for French Dual Language Expansion recommendations as well as giving you some updated information on the demographic of our current Francophone students and families. To provide you some staff, some survey results from staff, from incoming English-speaking parents, current English-speaking parents and current French families. Giving you also an impact analysis. Last board meeting, it was presented, you know, what if this program was in a variety of different buildings? I did speak with the principals and have some information about that as well. And to give you an overall recommendation as well. So this slide, we have seen before. Again, reminding you of the increase of our population of Francophone students and families in the district. We are at the point, as you can see from the following two slides, which I will not read the legislation to you, but we are at the point where we do need to expand programming. Regardless of which building or what structure, by law, we are at the point where we have to increase programming for our Francophone families. Our, as you heard tonight, there is a lot of interest. You know, we have done a variety of different discussions with our Francophone families through formal meetings, through informal discussions, through visiting them in their, in some of their different events and getting feedback that they are interested in this. We have historically had waitlists of families that have been interested in dual-language education. Since we started Spanish Dual Language Education, the community, the district and the board has repeatedly asked, when can we give this to all of our families across the district? And this is an opportunity to do that. As I mentioned, this is the legislation that we are required to implement regarding transitional bilingual education. I do want to just discuss a little bit of what transitional bilingual education means as opposed to dual-language education. So bilingual education as a term is what we refer to as an umbrella term. There are a variety of different models that fall within bilingual education. Transitional bilingual education is a model that is just that. It's that we are transitioning the students from their first language over to their second language. This is an example of what in the bilingual education field we refer to as a subtractive model, where we are subtracting their L1, their first language, and replacing it with their L2, which is their second language. It is a model that is used all over the state. It is the bare minimum model. My recommendation for moving to two-way is because that is an additive model. Two-way dual language is an additive model where we are hoping to maintain their culture and language in addition to another language as opposed to taking one away and replacing. Within a minimum model of TBE, we would be looking at fulfilling these requirements. Instruction in subject areas in their native language, instruction in language arts in their native language, and providing ESL instruction as well as instruction of their history and culture. So currently, there are fifty-one students that are enrolled in the French program at King School. Twenty-nine of those students have siblings somewhere in the building, some older, some younger. One of the proposals was that I have gotten through feedback of the surveys is, well, why not start dual language for K1 at one building and send other families to another school and provide programming at both sites until they roll up? That is, that would affect seven families, which to me is an equity concern. We don't ask any other families in the district to, we do not require them to split their children across buildings. And I think it would be unfair to ask one of our language groups, marginalized group, to have to do that just so that they can receive the services that they need. Forty of the students at King School right now are identified as English language learners. As the legislation stated, to have twenty or more means that we have to increase service. At early childhood for next year, they anticipate having fifty Francophone students enrolled at early childhood. A question came up about homeschools, where do these children live? The homeschools, as I had mentioned last time, primarily, they live in Wiley School Zone. Next is Dr. Williams. And then there are three that live in Dr. King, Lille or Yankee Ridge. So discussing what the program would look like in any of these sites. And as I had mentioned, I had had conversations with the principals or acting principal in all of these buildings. So at Wiley, so currently, as of the end of March counts, the enrollment at Wiley was two hundred and fifty-nine. There is one empty classroom there, not including fine arts. There is one fine arts room that is always empty because of the rotation. There are three in the building, but because every period, the fine arts schedule shifts, there's, there's always one empty. There are two classroom teachers who are leaving, which would allow for the natural attrition of hiring dual-language teachers in those places instead of monolingual teachers. However, since the building is only designed to be a two-strand building, eventually, the building would have to convert to one strand of dual language and one strand of monolingual. So the enrollment would have to be fairly even and wouldn't allow for much flexibility between classrooms. At Thomas Paine, the current enrollment is three oh three. There is one classroom in the building that is empty, but that is currently designated for the after-school program. The principal felt that, you know, this really would offer the families who are interested in DL the option. The feedback that she had gotten and what I had gotten from the few surveys that were returned to me was, you know, dual language is great, but we really would rather have Spanish instead of French. And the principal seconded in that as well. And it would increase the linguistic diversity. Thomas Paine does have the least amount of ELLs that waive ELL services in the district. So it would add some linguistic diversity to the building. The principal felt that there would not be room to expand over time as the program were to grow. At Dr. King, the current enrollment is three oh two. Dr. King, at this moment, does not have any extra classrooms. Students receiving French native language classes would need to increase service regardless, as I had mentioned. So it would impact the current structure, schedule and staffing assignments at the building. Because there is not any space right now for the increased need for programming, it would require some shifting between of classroom uses, shifting of what teacher assignments are just in order to meet the bare minimum needs that were required to by law. However, the pro that is mentioned in much of the survey data and much of the feedback that I've gotten from King family is that the families are established there. The transitioning to DL would be smooth in that sense that the families know the school. However, I mentioned not having space, when I had mentioned that to the staff, that was a concern then, was if we don't have space here, what does that mean for, how does that impact the building in other ways? And I'll mention, and I'll discuss that some more. At Yankee Ridge, the current enrollment, as of the end of March, was three hundred and eighteen. They will have eight new classrooms for the eighteen-nineteenth school year. There would be no shifts in students or staff moving out of the school in order to accommodate the program being at that building. So some of the many, many data points that I can share with you this evening. So for non-French-speaking families, I sent a survey to all of the kindergarten classrooms at Dr. King, Yankee Ridge, Thomas Paine and Wiley. I did not get a huge return rate, unfortunately, but I would like to present you with what I did get. The, as you can see, Yankee Ridge had the highest return rate for the surveys. About five, if, if we average one and two together, were, were not interested, but about six were and about three were fairly neutral. With Thomas Paine, two were not interested, two were. And at Dr. King, about five were not interested and four were very interested. At early childhood, I also sent the survey home to all current early childhood KH students that would be entering into those four buildings for next year. Again, we did not get many families returning the survey back. We only got five, one from King, one from Thomas Paine and three from Yankee Ridge. So while the data is there, again, it's, it's fairly, it's a fairly small sample. When, I did do outreach with the Francophone families, providing surveys. And we had nineteen surveys returned, but because the survey allowed them to give feedback from multiple children, that actually was representative of twenty-seven current Urbana students. As you can see overwhelmingly, again, the, our Francophone population is very interested in this model of program. One of the questions on the survey was asking them if they were willing to split their children. And as you can see, they were okay with it. You know, that was a yes, that they would be willing to do it. But again, from an equity perspective, I really think it is not appropriate to ask our families to do that. So some of the feedback that they wrote on their surveys, I wanted to share with you. So some of the families, this is, these were their comments. "French is her first language. She must not forget it. French and English have the same value. It, French DL, will give a lot more opportunities to the children. It is good to be able to communicate with everyone and also keep the culture. It, French DL, will allow them to be bilingual with a lot of opportunities in the future. We want that our children can grow up with the French language that is our official language. To know two to three international languages is a great advantage to the child." So when I also sent a survey out to staff to gauge their interest. I did get, and again, this was sent to staff at Dr. King, Thomas Paine, Wiley and Yankee Ridge. I did receive seventy-seven responses, twelve from Thomas Paine, fourteen from Wiley, twenty-three from Dr. King and twenty-eight from Yankee Ridge. The majority were teachers and administrators. A small sample were paraprofessionals and then fifteen point six was other, which could have included anyone on the email list, which could have been, you know, long-term subs, cafeteria workers, hall monitors, any, anyone who is on that Yankee Ridge email that does not fit under the teacher-admin category or a paraprofessional. From the survey information, the most interest, or within the twenty-three people that responded from Dr. King, there was about, there were seventeen people who were very interested or interested in having it. Four of them were neutral and two of them were not. At Thomas Paine, the majority of the staff were not interested in having this in their building. At Wiley, there were seven that were not, five that were and two that were neutral. And at Yankee Ridge, there were nineteen that were not, three that were and six that were neutral. So within that feedback, I had asked a question on the survey as well. What concerns do you have about putting this program in your building? So at Dr. King, there, so through all of this feedback, I found common themes that presented themselves within the written feedback. At Dr. King, the concerns were space. How would having this program impact the current staff assignments? As well as how would losing these students impact current staff assignments? And they were really concerned about losing an established part of the student and family community. At Thomas Paine, the main concern was about space. At Wiley, the concern was about moving to one strand of English. How would it impact current staff assignments if there was only one strand of monolingual classrooms? As well as the concern about impact or, or the need to transfer current students as well as starting this program in a building with a brand-new administrator that year coming up. At Yankee Ridge, the, the main themes were space. The concern about adding this program into a building when the status of discipline management is a concern there as well as the impact of adding additional students to the building and the impact to current class sizes and how the program design would fit within the current structure of Yankee Ridge. So just to give you some feedback, the additional feedback and outreach that was done in addition to these surveys that I had discussed last time. So between Dr. Weemelton and I, we did meet with elementary PTAs and staff. I will say that we met with most of them. There were a couple that we missed just due to scheduling. And that began as early as January twenty-ninth. That first January twenty-ninth meeting, I looked back on my calendar, was when I first went to Yankee Ridge. February twelfth was when I talked to King PTA. So these meetings have been happening for at least half of a month. On February thirteenth, I did meet with the Francophone families and had a formal meeting with them there and approximately twenty showed up. The Thought Exchange survey was live from January thirty-first to February fourteenth. And then we also, through myself, through the French parent coordinator from early childhood as well as our French teacher, have met directly in person with Francophone families in the community and gotten feedback there. So another question that came up was more in-depth analysis of thought exchange. My apologies that this did not go out ahead, to you ahead of time. They were very last-minute with this information for me, but I did wanna present it to you this evening. So the question that was asked on the Thought Exchange survey was, to what extent would you be interested in participating in a French-English dual-language program at your school? So at King, fifteen participants in the Thought Exchange survey responded to this question. Eleven of them were parents and four of them were staff. You can see that there were twelve that had positive feedback, two that were neutral and one that was not interested. At Thomas Paine, they had seven people provide feedback through the Thought Exchange, four that had positive feedback, one that was neutral and two that were not interested. At Wiley, there were twelve participants, ten parents, two staff. There were eight that were, had positive feedback, two that were neutral and two that were not interested. At Yankee Ridge, there were thirty-six participants, twenty-six parents, ten staff, fifteen that were interested, thirteen that were neutral and eight that were not interested. So again, in discussions about space, about interest for French families, interest for the... interest for the least amount of impact to families and staff across the district, I continue with my recommendation to starting this program as early as next year for our French dual-language families at Yankee Ridge. The newly-built classrooms will allow for development without relocation of current staff and students, as well with the possibility of expansion for early childhood classrooms at Yankee Ridge. This would, similarly to what we do now, allow one site to provide support to our Francophone families from three and up, which, having that option between Dr. Williams and early childhood now, has really been a benefit to our Spanish-speaking families. Program design would begin, would continue immediately. I don't want to say that it would begin because, as I had mentioned, per law, I have to move forward with a plan for our Francophone students at a minimum for next year. So I have already been in conversation with publishers about materials. I know that that was something that was mentioned. I have already posted positions. I have already had people interested. One of the benefits of having a really great dual-language program is that we get people interested in working for us from all over the country. I've hired one person for Spanish dual-language from California. I spoke to someone from California today who wants to work in our French program, a former French dual-language teacher. So there is, there's a lot of interest in working for us. You know, and every, everyone puts on their application. Why do you want to work in Urbana? Because I hear such great things about Urbana. The way that you approach diversity, the way that you approach the cultures of our family, the way that you're so transformative with dual-language education. I want to work for you. So that's something that I'm really looking forward to. And I do want to address some of the concerns that were mentioned earlier. As far as transferring families, you know, one of our family representatives had mentioned that. In any environment, we want to make sure that families feel welcome. That is a conversation that I have had since my proposal about Yankee Ridge, having that conversation with Mr. Anderson about what do we do to make this building feel like a welcoming home for a large group of ELL students, as well as providing consultation with Ms. Yvonda Smith, who went through this process. How did she do it? How did she make sure that that is a unified building that is inclusive of a DL program? One of the things that you see all over the country when we have DL is that programs can often turn into a school within a school. And that is something that I absolutely do not want to have happen to any of our schools in the district. And really have being, I really see it as an advantage, having Ms. Smith still in the district, to really provide some coaching guidance to whoever the principal is who adopts this program. As well, some of, I have already been in consultation with the U of I about a partnership program, having U of I scholars, visiting scholars from France, coming into our buildings and helping provide support, whether that's in the lunchroom, in the classroom, doing translations for the district, providing support in the office. There is, I'm sorry. As well as working with our current French family coordinator on doing somewhat of a little job fair with our Francophone families in the community that want to work in the district, but maybe have challenges filling out the application due to the language. So setting up a fair in order to provide them opportunities where a district can provide them support to fill out the application and help get them connected with the ROE. I'm already, plans to do PD. This is something that Dr. Weemelton and I typically do annually, where we go to all buildings and provide support on how to work with ELLs. A previous presentation that we had, one in four students in our district either has a different, has another language spoken in the home or speaks another language. That means that all of our teachers in the district really should be trained on how to work with ELLs and their families. And that is an outreach, support and mission that I really look to improve upon for next year as well. How do we give that training to all of our students across the district? Let's see here. So my last piece that I had already mentioned was about staffing. Depending on the model that we were to move forward, we could potentially use the current staff that we have to provide support for the first year of the program. As I had mentioned, I have posted for positions already and I do already have some interest. So I'm looking forward with Craig there. So are there any questions? Sorry, I did a lot of talking.
I have questions, but I want to give other board members a chance first.
I do, you want me to go first? Okay. Yeah. Thank you. I mean, clearly, when you consider all the aspects as you've laid them out, I mean, there's a compelling case for locating the French dual-language program at Yankee Ridge when you consider school size and space availability and such. Yet, the breakout and the thought exchange that you provided this time, which was very helpful. I mean, it was clear that the majority of that response, those responses were from parents. I mean, overwhelming majority were from parents. So hearing staff feedback that you did in today's presentation, both the general feedback and then the survey feedback, you know, the staff intra-survey data.
Sure.
I mean, we can't ignore the fact that Yankee Ridge staff have said in many ways, this is not something that we think will work very well. And the number of concerns listed are genuine concerns. So I guess, you know, my question is, can these, and maybe this is as much a question for Mr. Anderson as it is for you, can these genuine concerns be addressed adequately so staff feel good about, you know, starting this? So we have a unified school, so we don't have a school within a school and we don't start out a year with divisions that are, you know, we end up kind of doing a lot of cleanup needlessly.
So I will address my portion of that. So I completely agree with you Peggy, that, you know, I do not want to, to put a program in a building that does not want them. As I had mentioned, you know, in, in the history of bilingual programming, that, that is a risk that happens where the non-DL population that is working within, you know, it is a school within a school. And my hopes is, as I had mentioned, continued work with Mr. Anderson, as well as continued support from people who have been through this, that we can address that head-on and creating it as, within a unified approach. I will say, from the comments that were given specifically from Yankee Ridge, many of them said, it's not that we're against dual language. We are all for considering this program. It's that we're concerned about adding it within the current state of the building.
Thank you. I would second much of what Lupe said. There's, it's no secret that there's some staff members that are hesitant to have this program. And I'm glad you're aware of that situation and I've listened to the staff and heard their concerns. And as Lupe said, I have not heard one single person say, no, we don't want it here indefinitely. There's just some hesitations because it is now the month of May. We've been through a lot at Yankee Ridge with construction, literally. The building is changing brick by brick on a daily basis. And change is quite challenging. We're experiencing it. We're growing. But with growth, there's opportunity. And I see this program as a wonderful opportunity for our Yankee Ridge community, for helping to culturally enrich the community. It's a chance for us to, to embrace the Francophone people. And I think it'd be a privilege and an honor to receive those students in our building. I will have some work to do with, along with Lupe, to unify the staff. I have heard their voice, but I believe that we have a fantastic opportunity, not only for our current students, but for the students in the district as a whole that speak French, that we legally need to respond and have a stronger program with more supports in place. And that is one of the highlights that I've shared with the staff, would be the supports that come with a dual-language program. The additional instructional supports, the family liaison as well. And I think it would be beneficial for us to unite around this culture because right now, we're kind of in a bit of a flux, in part due to the construction and finding our way. And there will be, you know, some natural challenges with simple things like figuring out our traveling patterns in the building next year when we have two new hallways. There'll be things like that, but we're going to get through that. I, I know how strong my staff is. I know how much they care. I know how professional they are. I know how hardworking they are, their dedication and commitment. As challenges have occurred this year, they have stepped, stepped up numerous times. And I also think it's, it's a testament to what a wonderful group of students and families we have when the, when the Kings teachers say, we, we don't want to lose these kids. And I know that Yankee Ridge will be there soon should the program come to Yankee Ridge. I do honestly believe that we will embrace them fully with open arms and never want to let go.
Thank you.
If this program did come to Yankee Ridge, do you foresee the need for a full-time assistant principal?
Yes, I, I think that that would be extremely helpful. It's hard to, as it, you know, it's hard to say, say no to that, to that question, to be quite honest. But yes, I think it would be beneficial in that we're expanding, you know, fifty, fifty-plus students. If you look at our numbers, they'd be comparable to, possibly to Dr. Williams, I believe. And, you know, right now, we have a halftime assistant principal. And so I think the, the cost, while it is a decent number or a decent increase in cost to the, to the board, I do think it would benefit the students and the staff to have additional supports with a full-time assistant principal.
I would be curious, and I don't know if you have the numbers or not, but to how many families are actually within walking distance that would be in this program to Yankee Ridge, or if they would need to be bused?
Oh.
You're talking about English-speaking families?
No.
The Francophone families?
Yes.
So as part of programming, we would have to bus them regardless because that is something that, per program, I mean, we, we don't require them to provide their own transportation. So even though they live in Wiley's own, we still provide transportation to them to King or we would at any other building that they're at.
I guess I was just wondering, the proximity, if it was close enough, you know, Wiley and Yankee Ridge are really not that far apart.
I understand that question.
That's what I was wondering about.
Yeah.
Do you understand?
That's, that's kind of going to go to some of my questions, so I'm going to jump in here.
Thank you, John.
With, with, with the vast majority of the Francophone families living in the Wiley area, why are we setting up a program where we have to bus? Why aren't we allowing them to walk to their school so they can have a neighborhood school?
Is it the Wiley tennis boundary that's near the school or the one on the other side of the town?
It could be either way. Could be either way. And the three that are part of Yankee Ridge could be walking to Yankee Ridge or a bus to Yankee Ridge. I mean, that's relatively important to me. On your analysis, and I'm assuming you don't have the answer to that question tonight.
I have their addresses. I would have to actually do that, yeah.
On your analysis of Wiley, you mentioned the, having a new administrator start next year as a disadvantage.
Not necessarily.
I would view it as an advantage because you'd have the opportunity to hire a principal that is dual-language, French and English. And that, to me, that's something that we've talked about at both of the other schools where we have DL, that we don't have an administrator that speaks, or they had to learn it on the job. And so I, I, I look at it that way. I'm also still a little bit puzzled about what we're actually talking about here in immersion program versus complying with the law. And so I'm, I'm still troubled by the fact that we think we have to move all fifty-one all at once. Yankee Ridge has had a, not a challenging year. Yankee Ridge has had a extremely difficult year with the combination of many new students being added to the building all at once in a year that is already disrupted because of construction. And now we're talking about another influx of, a block of fifty students. I put in an email earlier today to Don after seeing your presentation that I've watched that happen in other instances in this district. And it has sometimes taken the building years, not months, years, to recover from an influx, a massive influx of students in short order, be it across two element, two years or across one year. And so I, I thought we were talking about immersion program for K one and then letting the program grow as those children aged up. Are we talking about something different or is that what we're talking about?
So by law, so I'll address everything at once. So your first comment about the principal. Any new principal is going to have to go through the process of being a new principal. Ideally, yes. Any time that we can find a principal that is French, bilingual, understands bilingual education, has a history and understanding of that, great. I will tell you from a recruiting standpoint, that is something very challenging and would be very hard to fill by this fall. However, Mr. Anderson has experience running a building that has bilingual education in his previous experience in Rantoul. He knows what it's like to run a building that has multiple languages going on and providing an environment that is unified like that, which is why not only is the building a good choice because of the structure and other components, but also because they already have the leadership that has that knowledge. That is not something that Dr. Williams had and still does not have. However, the leadership there was very motivated to learn that information and to work collaboratively with Dr. Weemelton and I in order to, while they may not have had the formal knowledge and education, they were willing to gain that and learn that. But Ms. Smith was a very established principal and had a lot of years in that building, whereas a new principal would have to go through both of those steps at the same time. That, that, so it's not a disadvantage having a new principal, but it would be more challenging than having someone who's already familiar with working with that background and population. I will look into the addresses as far as walking distance. I do have that information. The part with the legal requirements, we would be required to provide that bare minimum TBE for all students K and up. That is something that we have to do. It is not feasible right now to do a two-way immersion program for second through fifth grade because even with our Spanish language program, we do not allow students to enter that program beyond first grade.
That's what I thought.
Yes. So we would, so we would essentially be doing both programs at the same time for a while. So we would have to, for our second through fifth grade students, modify what we're doing now to provide them the minimum that the state requires, which we're not doing right now. As well as for our K one, we would have to modify the programming. While we could only provide them the minimum, I am not the type of person that wants to do the minimum. I would rather give them the best possible thing that we can and do this within a two-way immersion model, which is also then inclusive of more students in the community.
Yeah, I'm, this is going to be a broken record tonight coming out of me, but we have a lot of demands on our dollars right now. And I would rather see us put our dollars into people as opposed to putting them into buses to drive people around town. And I'm just, I'm, I'm real worried about what's going to be presented to us in June in terms of a tentative budget for next year. And so I'm, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about just assuming that we're going to bus everybody to, to Yankee Ridge.
John, can I, I just want to point out that we currently bus almost all the Francophone families. And that busing is required by law, so no matter where they went, they would be eligible for bus service. And that's.
Even if they live two blocks from the school that they attend?
Not if they're, not if they live two blocks from the school that they attend.
I'm using hyperbole, but.
That would be, that would actually be an increase to the money that we have as the district. That, that, or, excuse me, that would be a decrease to what we're spending right now if we were to put it at Yankee Ridge. That, it would not in any way inflate what we're spending on busing because right now, going to King from where they live is very close to as high as it could possibly go because they don't live within walking distance of King School. If it was at Yankee Ridge, it would actually save us money because some, there are families that are within walking distance. We do not bus, we do not bus students who live within the Yankee Ridge zone for programming purposes unless they live outside the mile and a half, which they would have gotten busing anyway.
Yeah, I guess that's why this is an issue because three families live in what you call the Yankee Ridge assignment area, whatever, if that means far north side of town or far south side of town because they're both. If that means far north side of town or far south side of town, because they're both. Twenty-six live in, so over half live in the Wiley attendance area.
But some of those twenty-six live in the part of the Wiley attendance area that's in walking distance of Yankee Ridge. That number I don't have for you. I can get you that number, but that's what I'm saying, even if it's...
Okay, so what's the answer to the question? If they live within a mile and a half and they're eligible to walk, are we still forced to bus them?
No.
All right.
Go ahead.
So one thing I think might alleviate some of the concerns at Yankee Ridge would be to do a projection that's that, you know, kind of a what-if scenario. Let's say we had the eight extra classrooms, and let's say that, that the, that the DL program were put in there. What would the class sizes look like? Because right now...
Right. I, I've actually looked at that, and, and that's another reason. You know, I think in the larger picture, we need to consider this program because it's right for Yankee Ridge, and I didn't wanna concentrate solely on the immediate, as in it's May, we're preparing for next school year, but that's our reality. I hope to be able to say that we're going to be a three-strand school. We have eight additional classrooms that we're building currently. And looking at the numbers of our current students in each grade level, we currently have three kindergartens, we have two in all the other grades. And if we just maintained, even though we had high class sizes in second grade and in fourth grade earlier this year, we would still be under the cap. If we kept the same number of students that we currently have, we'd be under the cap in every grade except for first grade. In other words, first grade would be the only grade that would need an additional teacher. And therefore, we would still be looking at large class sizes at Yankee Ridge if we are going to, you know, operate as, as we have, just underneath that cap before we add an additional teacher to the grade level. So if we take those fifty students and we add them to Yankee Ridge, I think that would solidify the, the need for three strands in most grade levels with that first grade, grade level being a four strand. And I, I have the numbers here. I wasn't prepared to project, but I can share that.
To paraphrase, because we're adhering to contract maxims typically in, in, in our staffing, the addition of students would actually lower the average class size.
It would lower the, the class sizes, yes. And it would allow us to prepare in May rather than, you know, the, the chance that we wait and somehow we get more students in August, and then I'm scrambling to find quality teachers in August.
And could I just, and I just wanna clarify, the, the reason we're arguing to move all fifty families at one time is so we don't split families up. We don't say, you know, you siblings go here, here, this school and the siblings go here. Ideally, we'd like to keep families together as we did with, when we moved our Spanish-speaking students.
Yes.
And that's, I think that's a valid argument.
For seven families? And Brian, what are you anticipating in terms of what I'll call organic growth in the Yankee Ridge neighborhood? I, I just wanna caution everybody that every time we have built a new school, every time, we have had a huge influx of families into the area. And so are we gonna fill up Yankee Ridge to the point where when families show up, we're gonna tell them, sorry, the school's full. Walk to Wiley.
I appreciate the, the cautionary note. That, it's very hard to predict organically. You know, I see the homes that are for sale in the immediate neighborhood around Yankee Ridge, and it seems, having had a, a home on the, on the market two years ago in the area and purchased the home about sixteen months ago, it seems like it's comparable, that there's about the same number, but I don't have the actual numbers to know how many families are, are moving in.
So can I address that a little bit, too? I, John asked me this question by email earlier, and I'll pass this around. I think I have enough. I've been taking notes furiously, so board members might have to share a little bit. And I realize I wrote all over the back of one of mine. This is a five-year Yankee Ridge enrollment that's taken at Fall Housing, which is what the state usually marks as our comparable date, so it's a snapshot in time. And as you can see, from 2014 to 2016, we lost thirty students a year at Yankee Ridge, okay? That was natural decline. Those were larger fifth grades moving to sixth grade, and that was a natural, steady decline. We chose not to cut teachers. We shifted teachers. Teachers did move from one building to another. And in 2017, in order to offset, if you remember, that we talked a lot last year about how we were going to deal with the large school size, student population, and large class sizes at Dr. Williams, we put in what we called a soft cap, and that was a plan that we worked on for over a year. We implemented that, and as we implemented it, we did it a little differently than we had originally planned. And that is, we allowed the principals to accept more petitioners. And so about twenty of those students in 2017 are petitioners. About fifty of them are from Dr. Williams, okay? So there's an increase of seventy students. Our projections for next year, if those same students choose to stay there, okay? And petitioners have to petition year to year. We've had movement, when people petition, they tend to be petitioners that, I will say, there's mobility there across schools. But let's, our projections are if, if we have those same students there, we're seeing a decrease in overall numbers at Yankee Ridge. It goes from three thirty-five to three twenty-one. That's our projected enrollment, okay? And that's a generous projected enrollment for next year. So let's take a look at how big Yankee Ridge can be. We will essentially have the largest elementary school in terms of number of usable classrooms in the district. You're adding on eight classrooms. You're also adding on three fine arts classrooms, which free up two additional classrooms. So essentially, you have ten empty classrooms beyond what is currently there. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm seeing no's in the back and yeses from the principal.
The net gain, after all the other renovations are finished, the net gain is only seven?
I'm counting the eight classrooms, as you did, Don. No, I, I think it's nine or ten. We do have to account for the larger kindergarten classes that, as I have said, in first grade next year, either way, I believe we'll need a, a third teacher, so that, that classroom would be filled. So my count's nine.
And I would say that in my...
Either way.
In my presentation of those numbers, I'm talking about if we have the exact same number of students there this year as last year. And I completely agree. You need three kindergarten classrooms. You probably need three at a couple other levels. However, you're not at a point where you're a three-strand school.
Right.
You also would not be at a point where we'd be necessarily adding many staff. We could add one staff member based on projected enrollment. The building can handle, with lots of breathing room, according to the contract, four hundred and sixty students. That's an average class size across the board of twenty, okay? So that's well beyond, well below what our contract sets. So going from three twenty-one, adding fifty-one students who might be, if, if the board moves on this dual-language proposal and recommendation, that would bring it up to three seventy-two. We have a hundred and sixty, we have a hundred, a hundred and ninety, I'm sorry, we have ninety. I wasn't, I was doing the math backwards. We have ninety spots left and still have lots of breathing room in terms of the class size that's allowed by contract. Do I anticipate that we have to hire teachers? Yes. Do those teachers work with both Francophones and English students? Yes. Do they have bilingual? Not all of them. Because we will have many of these students integrated into with the bilingual supports that Lupe was talking about. Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. So this program, though, is going to, is going to mimic what we have at Lille where non-French families are allowed to join. So that was my question was, as John pointed out, in addition to families who see the attractiveness of moving to a neighborhood with a newly renovated school, how many more families do you anticipate? I mean, we have waiting lists for Spanish at Lille, so we did.
We did. This year, we do not. With the expansion, we do not.
That's great, but I mean, you know, for years, we did, and it's taken a long time for that to roll out and to even out. So that's, my question was, how many families do you anticipate? And I'm, I'm anticipating that the interest is going to grow before it levels out. So what is, will that do to these numbers?
So as I had mentioned, if they do not live within the Yankee Ridge zone and would not have gone there anyway, they're, they would enter as petitioners, assuming we follow the same protocol that we do for Spanish, which means that they are required to provide their own transportation, so it would not be an additional transportation cost for us. If families live in the King area and want to participate in this, they're welcome to, if I have seats after Yankee Ridge students have been placed, but they would have to provide their own transportation.
Okay, and I'm not just asking from a transportation cost. I was asking about the, the number of people in the building, the number of new students in the building in addition to, if, if you said all fifty of those students were gonna move, and then you've got their siblings, and then you've got new students who might move to the district for Yankee Ridge and everything, all told.
Sure. So for example, on the non-French speaking surveys that I sent out, again, it was not a large pool, but just of the nine families that returned feedback that they would be interested, that would still end up making a class of about eighteen kindergarteners because we do have anticipated, I believe it was around nine, nine or ten Francophone students that would make up the other half of the class for first grade. For kindergarten, our average has been about eight or nine students as well as, unfortunately, the interest survey from early childhood did not have a huge turnout. But, you know, the overall, if I were to go by the thought exchange from the community numbers, there would be interest. So each kinder, so typically, the kindergarten classes, I try to make sure that the demographic is at least fifty percent L-1, the first language speakers, and then fill in the rest of the seats, usually around to eighteen, because that allows for move-in of students that were required to provide service. So for first grade, it would be a good-sized class.
So do you use your data from the growth as a, a result of the Lille program to help inform your predictions for how this would work for non-French families who wanna join?
So...
Like, can you look at the data of, from the very first rollout of the Spanish dual-language program at Lille and then look at the number of families who petitioned to join that as the years went on? And use that to help predict how you think it would go with the French program as well?
Yes, that very first year of implementation for Spanish DL, the waitlist at Lille was very large. Some of those were petitioners, but the majority were families that lived in the Lille area. And that has continued up till this year. I take that back. We do have a waitlist of two students at Lille for kindergarten next year, but that is a drastic difference from the eighteen that we had last year.
And then do you also figure in, I remember what Dr. Weemel talking about, for example, the number of, say, Congolese families who, it's growing and it's not slowing down, and that's also been counted in there?
So all of that data we get from early childhood as much as we can. However, we do know that there are families that are in Head Start, are in other childcare facilities that sometimes we don't know about until centralized registration. But when they show up, if they ask, they want to receive French services, we're required to provide that to them.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I just had a, a quick question. Could you just refresh, how many children are in the BD program there and how many classrooms they use at your building?
There are currently, I believe, eight students in the program, many of which are transitioning into the gen ed classroom. They're at the point in their education where they're ready to transition back. And there are two classrooms. There's a K-2 classroom and a three-five classroom. Next year, or the summer with the remodel, we'll have three physical classrooms built for the EBD program, which is what we currently have. We have three classrooms, but there are only two classes that are staffed and that have students.
So the three classrooms would be some of the newer classrooms, or are they already established?
Two of which are, no, two of which are already established, as well as an office in between. And then we would be converting what's currently a fifth-grade classroom into that third classroom. So we do have three classrooms, but there's just two teachers currently. So we'll be maintaining the BD, or the ED program as it is currently.
Okay, thank you for that.
Going back to the space issue, go to your last slide.
I'm not sure which one. Do you know what it...
Recommendations and next steps. Middle bullet point. When we're talking about space, how many classrooms is this gonna use up? How many of the ninety does this, how many ninety spaces does this take away?
So if early childhood comes to Yankee Ridge, the plan is for the two classrooms that would be early childhood rooms to take the two after-school rooms. I would move the after-school coordinator into the new office space that the PE teacher would have. It's a fairly large space. They would share an office. And then we would use our current multipurpose room, which is also the cafeteria, for the majority of those activities. And we would need to use an additional classroom or two after-school for the after-school program, but it would not take away from any of the instructional daily classrooms. We, in our remodel plan, we had two after-school rooms, or two rooms that were designated just for after-school. And as schools change over time, you know, I realize that there may need to be a change. It's coming a little quicker than what we thought, but we do have space for the early childhood rooms.
I'm just commenting, that's another erosion of space.
Sure.
For what we all thought was gonna be room for new families to move to the Yankee Ridge area.
And then what staffing would look like for that? Do you...
That, that's a different, that's a different issue. It's grant-funded, if the grant is approved. I understand the grant's not approved yet, so... I'm just, okay, I've said my piece. If you haven't figured it out yet, I'm in favor of Wiley. It's an under-enrolled school. It's a school that has a shrinking attendance area in the neighborhood. People can walk there from all over the district, and people that don't wanna be a part of the DL program can walk to several other schools. I don't understand.
The one piece, like I said, I haven't heard spoken to quite yet, and I, I left my, sorry, I'm getting tired. So were we moving approximately fifty people out of King? So what does that do for King, and, and how do we deal with what might be an under-enrollment at that, that building?
Could be another space for early childhood.
There's a new housing development that's being built at the corner of University and Lincoln, on the northwest corner, that I believe is going to have several hundred units. That should be coming online sometime in the next six to nine months. And that potentially could have King students there. I was not able to get ahold of city planners to ask them what their projected enrollment, or not enrollment, but projected growth for that area is. But that's been one of the fastest developments going up in Urbana recently. It's a little bit hidden from the university trek. As you're driving along university, you see all these big things going up when you go into Champaign. This one's kinda behind the, the railroad tracks there, just north of the railroad tracks, where the, where the old water, water treatment facility was.
Any other board member questions?
I guess, is the discussion about the placement of the early childhood, two early childhood classes, if we get the grant, I understand that. Is that, why is that set upon Yankee Ridge? I mean, is there, is there still open discussion about placement of those? Should we receive the grant?
We can discuss that as well, but why, why, why Yankee Ridge?
Yeah.
Mainly because we are literally putting the largest building together.
Yeah.
I do not want to have vacant classrooms at our newest building. I also would like to remove the waitlist for the early childhood students. That's something that, when I look back at my own professional goals five years ago, that was in my own professional goals five years ago, was to remove waitlists for the early childhood students. Our early childhood center is not able to be expanded because of financial reasons. If we have the potential to remove the waitlist, I'm going to look and say, where are the, where are the classrooms? Okay? Right now, based on the projections, even with an influx of families into the Yankee Ridge sub-district, we still have classrooms that don't have students in them at Yankee Ridge. Does that mean that they will always live there? No?
Maybe we're jumping the gun a bit too, but, I mean, you could target the French-speaking, early childhood children to all go in the same building then.
I believe that that's what Ms. Fracconi said in part of her presentation.
Yes, that is a conversation that I have had with Ms. Vowles, that that would be a great way to pool resources, specifically, for example, our French family coordinator, who has a phenomenal relationship with the Francophone community. Many of you know the quality and caliber of Lucia Madonado's work with the Latino community. Our French family coordinator fills a similar role with our Francophone community. So, having both of those programs in the same building would actually provide that bridge for families in a much easier way, if, rather than the two programs being in two separate locations.
I will also add this, because I know Ms. Vowles is patiently waiting for her turn.
I know.
And I'm just going to preview this. The grant, the full-day grant actually, and the expansion grant, the two grants that Chris wrote for this year, actually provide supports beyond just the three and four-year-olds. They provide the potential to provide supports up through third grade. And so, if we have the ability to provide additional social work support, additional translating support, additional social... Yeah, not, probably not teachers. I don't know, Chris could probably answer that better than I could. But, yes, that would all be grant-funded, so many of the supports that we're talking about would not come out of district coffers.
The question is, what is the length of the grant? Is it a one-year placement?
Yeah.
We'll wait on that. Okay. Well, it pertains to what we're discussing now.
It's a five-year grant. You can amend it yearly, but it's a five-year grant.
Other questions for the team that is in front of us right now?
When will this come up for a vote?
Our plan was to bring it to you at the business meeting, because again, it's May.
Yeah.
And so, our plan was to bring it to you at the business meeting. But I'm obviously open and willing for advice and suggestion about that, if you need more time.
Well, I mean, I think we've got it nailed down. I, we're going to get more consensus on this, but it sounds like we're deliberating between Wiley and Yankee Ridge. Is that, is that the case? And if so, what will be interesting, I think, as, to help at least me with decision-making, to kind of see, you know, what-if scenario? What would the classroom sizes look like in these buildings? How would, how would the, how would we fill these buildings if we put these programs here, or if we did it in Wiley? I mean, I think that would, that would help. You might even have a projection of putting it Wiley, and it just isn't tenable.
So, I'll just add one thing that I don't believe Ms. Fracconi brought up. But, not only would it, I mean, the cons for Wiley are very similar to the reasons why we didn't move a Spanish dual-language program into a small school. Having two strands, one of those strands being Francophone dual-language, and one strand being English, essentially does limit options. You essentially are going to a one-strand English school and a one-strand Francophone school. That being said, I would hope that the board is still looking at, in the future, renovating Wiley, putting together some kind of special use, which I think is part of the facility's planning. That renovation of Wiley will displace all the Wiley students. And so, if we put in a new, if we put in a, if we put in a new dual-language program at Wiley, and in three, four, five, however long, six years, we displace all those students, and we have to spread them out across other buildings or a yet-to-be-determined seventh elementary school. I think we have to look at why we're making a decision to place a minority language group into a school where then they will be displaced completely later on. Again, I'm open to suggestions about when to bring this up for a vote. I'm open to suggestions about what additional information we need.
Well, I think I'd be prepared for a vote next meeting. I mean, partly because we don't want to set up the program for failure by giving them too little time to hire necessary staff and preparing the existing building staff for the change. And the closer we get to the end of the school year, I fear that will be the case. You know, teachers will be gone, and buildings will have, you know. So, speaking for me, I, I have the information I need to vote on at the next meeting. Other board members?
I would like to prolong and find out more options about Wiley. Wiley has been on the bottom of our list for, I don't know how long, to get any kind of renovations. I thought that when we redid Wiley, whenever that time came, that we would be able to send those children to Yankee Ridge, that there would be space. I didn't know we would have to separate everybody out, you know. I was not sure exactly how that would even look. But, I would like to explore more options with Wiley, because to me, if so many families are right there, it is centrally located, I think that we need to explore that option. And it is a neighborhood school, within walking distance.
I will say that we don't know that they're within walking distance, and so, that's one of the things that Lupe will bring back to the board even before the next board meeting.
I can get that to you by the end of the week.
If the majority of the board is ready for a vote, we should vote in two weeks, at the next, at the business meeting. Peggy raises a valid point that we, this is not a June decision. It's not appropriate to make this decision in June. It needs to be made in May. There's another option out there, which, if the board is ill-prepared, and that is to beef up the programming at King, to be on the minimum and make this decision for fall of nineteen implementation.
Well, I mean, that could be the vote in two weeks. It's, we go with Yankee Ridge, or we punt a year.
And I will add that if we did decide to delay a year because of the requirements for modifying the current program at King, that would require substantial modifications to the current structure and schedule. There is not enough time in the current daily schedule to provide an extra period of French instruction without compromising something else. I'm, I'm available to do that, but I would, in my discussions with Ms. Lewandowski and with staff, that is not something that they were very keen about doing.
I'm not suggesting we duck the law, but I don't believe that we would be the only school district in the state of Illinois that has that type of issue.
For me, it's not about the law. It's about the students and what's best for our students.
Board members, the administration is asking if you are prepared to vote.
I think we should have an actionable item on the next agenda.
I would, I would be willing to vote on it, but I do, it would be great if we could have just that, just the what-if scenarios that Paul had said about doing it at Wiley or somewhere else, just to play with those numbers, because I feel that I'd be better informed to make a vote. And I, it's so late tonight, you know, but I want to continue this discussion at our next meeting and set aside time to be able to sit and talk about it, all of us.
That's, that's enough board members to indicate that we need to have an actionable item with the added information that we've requested. All right. Let's move on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah.
Study topic. We have one, did the other people, where, Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. Okay, that's fine. We have, thankfully, only one study topic been left tonight. The mental health awareness will be rescheduled for a later date. So, we're ready for school improvement plan for our early childhood school.
Hello, everybody. I'm Chris Vowles. I'm the principal at Early Childhood. And I'm going to kind of go quickly through this, so I can answer a couple of questions that have already come up tonight. This has been our school improvement plan for this school year. We know that increasing student content knowledge also helps increase family engagement. So, our entire school improvement plan this year, all wrapped around getting to know families better and what happens in those families, so that when we teach their children, we know better where to start. So, for example, we understand that if we do a unit on transportation, the families in our community all have a different idea of transportation and experience with that. So, what our teachers did is they delved into that with each of our families and said, "So, when we talk about transportation, what does that mean to your family? Do you take the bus? Do your children have experience on trains? How many have been in planes? How many ride in cars? How many go by bike? How many spend most of their time walking?" And by using that information, especially children who come from overseas, transportation looks different in China than Italy, than the Congo. And so, we need to know the information about our families and the knowledge and the vocabulary our students have, so that we can teach them better. And we start with their knowledge base and increase it from there. And that's how we worked on family engagement, by getting to know what's happening in our families better, to teach their children better. That's the basis of our school improvement plan. And this is the research behind it. It just reiterates what I just said, that increasing family participation and engagement, students are going to benefit in the long term. Students are going to increase their knowledge, make meaningful connections with targeted units that are embedded with their family's cultural practices. We measured it by the level of family engagement that we have in our school and by student growth. We increased our two-way, to reach our families better, we had to do better communication with our families. We employed social media, Facebook, ClassDo-Jo. My teachers use the Remind app, which is a huge connector. They're very happy with that this year. We have more daily interactions with our families than we have in the past. Twitter app, the Twitter and the Blooms and all those sorts of things. We also went into, we've always done home visits with our families. But this year, we went in there with the intent, very specific intentional conversations with our families about their cultural practices and beliefs and those sorts of things, so that we could, instead of just those surface-level things, you know, "What's your child like?", you know, "What is his favorite food?", that kind of stuff. We went in with some very important and purposeful conversations to have. Of course, we continued our weekly newsletters. We helped our families identify what was, they get so much information in their backpacks and going home every day. We put stickers on key informations for our families to know if this has to do with this, if this is a priority item, get this back to us right away. And with some of the units and the themes that teachers were teaching, we would send home a survey ahead of time. What kind of things do you do at your bed, nighttime routines in your home? What kind of lullabies do you sing? What kind of books do you read? What time is bedtime? Those sorts of things, so that when we came back, we could use that information with our students, make sure we had that vocabulary. We invited families in to read, sing lullabies, read stories. Families were FaceTiming into, parents were FaceTiming into the classroom, so they could tell some of those cultural stories that we wanted to hear. We also, we have about, we have about four or five family engagement activities every month in our school. Summer in the evening, summer during the day. And we have exit slips for our families with everything that we do in our school now. So, and that exit slip says, "Does this help you understand what we do in our school better? Does it give you more knowledge about what to do with your child at home, his development, how to implement behavioral practices, those sorts of things?" We have more parent discussions this year, and we did a more intentional connection of parent to parent than we've ever done before. And this is just reiterating, we brought those home life practices and cultural practices into our classroom units of studies. So, a lot of this was through that daily conversation with families, as well as those surveys that went home. We looked at our classroom materials and our libraries. What kind of cultural representations do we have? Do we have things in our books, in our classrooms that mirror who we are in our classroom, what the demographics were in our classroom, as well as those window books that look out into other cultures? And what can we learn looking out from ourselves as well? So, we did a lot of work in that area as well. Some of our staff development focused on how to teach students who don't look like you, culturally relevant teaching strategies, whose culture has capital, and funds of knowledge. So, a lot of this also very much works with our racial equity work that our district's been working on very diligently for the last two years. This is just some data for our student growth. We looked very closely to see whether our students were growing, back to the racial equity piece, at the same, children of color were learning at the same growth as children who were white. And these are our growth charts. The students who are white are in blue. The students of color are in orange, and you'll see that, I don't know how to, so here, the first bar, for example, these are in math. So, you can see where they were in the fall and where they were in our winter benchmarks. So, they made significant growth, but the good news is that all students made significant growth, and not just one specific demographic over another. And that, so what's up here is math, language, language arts, cognition, as well as literacy. This is behavior, office referrals from August to February. And these are the number of office referrals we've had and the demographics. You'll see that we have in, in this graph, more students who are white being referred to our office at this point than we did African-American students, biracial students, or Latino students. office at this point than we did African-American students, biracial students, or Latino students. So our future goals, based on all of that, is to better meet the needs of our students and increase supports to our families, increase those socio-emotional supports. I put mental health specialist, so one of the things that is required from our preschool for all grant and the preschool for all expansion grant that Don referred to, is we are now required to have a mental health specialist on staff. That's different than a social worker. We will still have our social workers to support our students with special needs and those sorts of things, but the mental health specialist is, they're very specifically for students who have trauma in their background, whose families are dealing with mental health things that trauma can bring on. So that specialist is there not only to support the student, but the teacher who works with those students and the families in whose home those children live. So that mental health specialist is going to work with families and teachers to wrap around that support and make sure that those students get what they need. And as Don alluded to earlier, the preschool for all expansion grant that we applied for this year, that we are fully expecting to get next year, another key component of that is that we are required to make sure that our services spiral from birth to third grade. So it's not just a three to five grant anymore. It really is looking at a bigger picture. It's looking at serving the family, the entire environment that preschoolers live in, their siblings live in, and supporting them academically, socio-emotionally, as they go up through third grade. So wherever our preschool for all expansion grant lands, we will be supporting not only just the preschool, but we'll be going into that school with supports, mental health supports, instructional coaching supports, and family coordination and family engagement supports that are specific, birth to third grade. And that's some of the things that we have up here as well, increasing those academic supports, so literacy coach, instructional coach, increase supports for ELL students, hire an ELL bilingual staff, and increase spaces for them. That, in our world at early childhood, that means Spanish and French, though those are our two largest, fastest-growing languages. We have 11 other languages that we support, but those are two fastest-growing languages. And increase learning opportunities for children. So at the time that this was put together, I'm going to say it was late February, I had a waiting list of 52 at that time. That's the end of that slide, the end of that show. Can I help anyone with any questions or clarify anything?
I wanted to ask, I don't remember if you were the one who had mentioned it last year about connecting families. It could have been a different principal, but I seem to recall a discussion of that. And you just mentioned it here about parent-to-parent resources. Do you, what kind of successes are you seeing that? I know especially with early childhood, you probably have some first-time families, you know, this is their first child going into the school system, and are they meeting up with families who've gone through the system and mentoring them?
We hope so. This is really the second year that we've really put that deliberate effort into making sure that our families are connected with each other. So every family activity that we have, we make sure that there are introductions. We make sure that we say, you know, this is Javol's mom, and Javol and Maria are in the same class, so as parents who can get to know each other, and we make that, and we set up situations very deliberately that keeps parent, keep parents available to each other to talk and engage. So yes, we've gotten some very good feedback this year in person about that. We're just now sending out our annual survey to families, and that's one of the key questions in there. Do the things that we do help you make connections that you can move on to kindergarten, first and third, and second grade, supporting each other, because they're going to be each other's long-term support, where they're only with us for a couple of years. So we're working on that, and we're hoping to have great success. We want long-term success for our parents, so that they have that community to support each other.
Yeah, because, I mean, if you are a first-time family, there's just so many questions that you have about school in general, and to know people who, you don't even know what you're supposed to be doing, or how you're supposed to be responding, so.
That's one of the funnest things about some of those family engagement activities that we have in the evening. So we bring in behavior specialists who talk to our families about, you know, when is it okay to spank? Is it ever okay to spank? What can you do instead? And why won't my child go to bed? And why is he such a picky eater? All those things that parents struggle with. And the specialists that we bring in, we had pediatricians come in and speak with families, and a lot of it was just those families hearing from each other, it's like, my kid does that too. You're not the only parent who's struggling with these things, and here's, here's what I try. And eventually, what we found, it's not necessarily a presentation, we have dialogues with families. So the pediatrician will address this conversation, and pretty soon, this parent's talking to that one, this is what we do in our house, this is what we do in our house. Have you tried this? Oh, I found this great thing over here. And that's really what we're trying to build and expand on, and that's where we're seeing great success.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
Well, thanks for providing such strong leadership for our early childhood program, Chris. We really value you. You know, it's always distressing to see office referrals for preschool-aged children. The numbers are small, and yet, you know, they're concerning. I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit to what kind of behavior leads to an office referral for preschool-aged children, and how that those numbers have changed, if at all, in recent times?
They have changed, and so let me describe what an office referral looks like for us. So we have more than one adult in our classrooms, two, often three, most often three in our classrooms at this point, a teacher and usually two teaching assistants. So an office referral, as we define it, is if a child is under such distress that they're disruptive to the learning environment, where the other children can't learn, and another adult needs to come in to help calm that child, or take them from the environment so the other children can continue to focus and learn and do what they need to do. So, and it's always, almost 100% of the time, rarely is it not a safety issue. So if they're calling for help, it's usually because the child is unsafe now. They're throwing things, they're lashing out at others, and they're in such emotional distress that they just need someone else to come in and get this child to a calmer state of mind. And that's what an office referral is. It really is, does it take another adult to get that child under, in a safe place? Whether physically in a safe place, or socially, or emotionally in a safer place. And what we know is, all of the children that we are working with have, they have some pretty significant things going in their homes, but they're three and four. And so knowing how to deal with those sorts of things is very hard, and so it comes out in a three- and four-year-old kind of tantrum, meltdown, come apart, mad at the world kind of way. So sometimes they come into my office, because that seems to be the safest place. Sometimes it's us going into where they're at and helping them there. We have two sensory rooms in our school, and sometimes it's a matter of taking them out of the classroom, putting them into the sensory room, where they can swing, they can rock, they can sit in a beanbag, they can do what they need to do until they can be better.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I just had a quick question, Chris. Is the office referral, is that in addition if a child has a one-to-one aide?
So if a child has a one-on-one aide, that is usually because of the special education needs that they have. They have significant needs that need to be addressed medically, or safety-wise, or learning-wise. So yes, these are not necessarily students, these are, I'd have to look at the names, but I, these are not students who have special education needs. These are at-risk students without special education labels.
Who, what kind of training does the person have who goes in or helps with this office referral? I mean.
So all of my staff have special ed degrees, including me. That's our background. We have two social workers on staff, so it really depends who is closest to take care of that safety issue right away. So if it's, if a social worker's closest, and we're lucky enough to have our social workers in the same wings as our classrooms. So the social worker who serves the Blue Village has an office right there in the Blue Village. So she's available, she's called first, and that's her training. Sometimes it's me, because the social workers aren't available. Sometimes it's another teaching assistant who has experience in early childhood. You know, so it just really depends who's available. But all of us have gone through trauma training, we've all gone through TCI training, we've all gone through PBIS, we've got, you know, CEFL training, so we all have that base understanding. And once again, part of it is just, we aren't counseling the child, but we're just getting them to a better place, and then we work with them as to, what can you do when you're upset? Give them the calming box, redirect them and teach them those skills where they can get themselves calm without needing an adult to help.
Okay, thank you. I just have one more quick question. The 52 on the waiting list, has that been all year long, or is this just a recent development? Or?
Every year, we have between 40 and 100 children on our waiting list. So it starts low at 40 or so in November, and then it just builds up from there, and I'm sure it's more than 52 now. I haven't checked recently how many kids are there, but we screen children every Tuesday and Friday, and we'll continue to screen into the summer. And so because we're full, we don't have spaces for all those children, and so that waiting list will continue to grow until August, when the children on the waiting list automatically get in next year.
Okay. I did one more question. I'm sorry to be asking so many. I know it's very late, but maybe John could help me with this. When we added on the early childhood to Prairie, did we leave enough space to build more villages?
Yes, the Green Village. We're waiting for the Green Village to be built.
Okay. Thank you.
I think there's actually room for more than one more village.
Well, in the plans, there's room for one, in the plans, there was one more village. But certainly, there would be land.
But I think you can go east if we ever had the money.
I think, my memory serves me, it was an ad alternate. The Green Village was an ad alternate that we decided to.
And that does go east.
Postpone.
Yep.
But the plot, the plot of land allows for more than just one more village.
Yes, there is land for more than one. So I'm going to talk briefly, because I also know it's late, about the preschool for all expansion grant that's been brought up. So this was an opportunity that the state gave us to serve more children, as Don said, get them off the waiting list, but there are some pieces of this grant that come with it, has to be full day. It is meant to serve the kids in the same way that we do now, in the high-quality way, including the instructional coach and mental health specialist, those literacy coach, those pieces will come with that grant. So we are, we applied, and we fully expect to get it. We got it for summer, so we're implementing the preschool for all expansion grant for summer school this year. And when the consultant from the state came into my office and talked to me about that, she says we can fully expect to get it for next year as well. They're just waiting for that final state budget to be passed, but we have no reason to believe we won't get it. And so this is an opportunity for us to serve more students who's, who really could benefit from a full-day program. It is also, we're targeting four-year-olds who are going into kindergarten, to better prepare them for kindergarten, and give them a good place to learn. So that's, that's what that's all about. We expect to have, have that money to be able to reach children. We need a space to reach them in.
Is the summer program a full-day program?
Yep, has to be for expansion.
All right.
It is late. Chris, thank you. Thanks for, thanks for, oh, I'm sorry. Chris, thanks for being patient and waiting so long. Chris, I don't know if you heard that, but thank you for being so patient and waiting so long tonight. We have no action items this evening. We have no call for special executive meeting, or special or executive meeting, superintendent's report.
Yep, I'll try and make this fast, but I do have several items I just want to touch on. First of all, equity in action. I think you've seen a lot of equity in action during the last couple of board meetings around issues of student discipline. We do plan to have a middle school update at the next board meeting. Dr. Woods wasn't able to be here tonight, and I actually, at Elaine Spungen's suggestion, she was back there, and she, she must have called it quits a little earlier, but she, she set up a meeting and kind of facilitated a meeting with me. It was an optional meeting after school yesterday. About 30 to 35 teachers showed up, and really had a really good, open, honest discussion, and I really appreciated that. I heard that teachers are nervous and frustrated about next year, about the fact that there aren't clear plans yet, that they're also concerned about, about having enough time to actually get through a really clear, clear plan as we move forward, but they're also eager to get that done. One of the things that they clearly stated, I think Elaine mentioned this, was, yeah, there were some concerns around issues of student discipline and behavioral issues long before we started having discussions about Deans. We will continue to work on providing leadership and support and clarity, to make sure that as we finish up the year, that the teachers feel comfortable and confident about coming back next year, that they know what's going to be expected in terms of professional development. Matt has already got a little jump on the de-escalation training. We plan on putting that in as quickly as possible at the middle school, if not this year, as we come back next year. I also sent around a couple links that some of our equity leadership pulled to the board, and I just want to pull out a couple of things that were very relevant to me. One is a statement off of the Illinois State Board of Education website, that is, "Schools should be safe and supportive environments conducive to teaching and learning for educators and students. On the path to creating this culture, schools should rely less on exclusionary disciplinary techniques, e.g., suspensions and expulsions, and instead utilize methods that focus on social-emotional behavioral needs of all students. Districts must use non-exclusionary methods of discipline that include restorative justice approaches, restorative conversations, peace circles, peer justice mediation, classroom-based interventions, classroom management and consultation, training and functional analysis of behavior and interventions, and referrals to appropriate service providers. School-based mental health service providers in coordination with community-based mental health service providers. The district provides additional resources, classroom support, and professional development to implement these alternatives." So that's straight out of the state law, SB 100, that people refer to. That's something that we, again, we feel like we've been ahead of the curve on. We will continue to work collaboratively with our teachers to make sure that we stay ahead of the curve, and to continue to push on this issue of disproportionality of exclusionary disciplinary practices for our historically marginalized populations. As I said, middle school update, you will have on your agenda for next time. Engagement in action, I have decided not to put any action items on the board meeting tonight, but I have revised the timeline for the strategic plan. I ran that by union leadership, because it was union leadership that brought their concerns. They responded very positively to that, so you'll see that next time. But we're also planning some family and community engagements to ensure kind of previews of things, and to get people excited about the work that's coming. And so those will be kind of question and answer, and they'll also be kind of previewing some of the things in the strategic plan, some of the directions we're headed. I also want to thank, speaking of engagement, thank a number of people who came together, I'll thank leadership of Kathy Barber and Jacinda Cromer, who are both in the room. They sent out surveys and sent out invitations. They sent out surveys and sent out invitations, had a wide range of people, families, faculty, staff, involved in the screening, hosting and interview teams for the Wiley principal. Six, six candidates were interviewed, and I now have a lot of things that I'm sifting through in terms of all of the feedback that they provided. We asked for an all-written feedback so that, I have lots of late nights, but it's, it's very good reading. And so we're in the last stages of setting up interviews this week and hopefully have a, have a very strong candidate that we can introduce at the next board meeting for Wiley. Last thing under engagement is the C101 mentoring banquets. Last week was the first one, which was seventh and eighth graders. I believe next week is the elementary, and the week after that is the high schools. And that's celebrating our CU one-to-one mentors and the CU one-to-one scholarship program that provides scholarships for all of our graduating seniors this year. I believe we have 55. Tomorrow night is high school? Thank you. Tomorrow night is high school. Elementary is two weeks out. Excellence in action. Couple things. One is, I'll just pass this around to anybody interested, but ACTO provided us with a, ACTO is the NAACP program for STEM and STEAM education. That is science, technology, engineering, math, culture, and art. And they have a yearly competition that the district administrators actually pool resources together and sponsor students and pieces of that. And so I will pass around the program. Well, we didn't have any Urbana students win gold medals this year. They did show a video that the National ACTO group put together that featured an Urbana high school graduate from two years ago, Kyle Robinson, who won not only a gold here, but went on and won a national award for public speaking. So that's one. The Exchange Club last week honored our National Honor Society members with kind of a thank you for their service in the community. An Exchange Club has always been supportive of academic and service learning excellence in our schools, and so we thank the Exchange Club for that. And then today, had the pleasure of being at the Rotary Club as they honored five students who were awarded for vocational and work experiences. Give me just a second, 'cause I do have their names. Wanted to give special shout-outs to them because they are students who, give me a second. It's right here somewhere. Yay. There. There are students who are seniors at Urbana High School who either have unpaid internships or paid work experiences. And these five received special awards from Rotary for their excellent accomplishments in those work experiences. Ira Alcantara, Jacob Luftman, Jeremy Rumsey, Dinesha Upshaw, and DeAndre Donald. And I had the pleasure of eating with DeAndre Donald and his family at Rotary lunch today. And DeAndre's award came from a variety of things, but he won a bracket. I just have to share this story. He won a bracket in the March Madness at his place of employment. He was proud of the fact that he had Villanova going all the way. He won $2,000 in the bracket at Home Depot. That is money that actually just goes to him, but he told me that he donated $500 of that back, one to an education foundation that provides books and school materials to, to needy children. And the other piece was to a program that Home Depot has that is like an assistance fund for families that run into financial trouble. And I thought for a high school senior to do that on his own is pretty darn impressive. And that really speaks to the character and the exemplary things that we wanna foster in our students. And so kudos to all five of those award winners. But I just wanted to share DeAndre's story that he was a little shy about telling me about, but his grandmother insisted. So that's it for my superintendent's report tonight. Thank you all for an 11:30, almost closing time.
Well, school board member reports. Any reports?
I just had a couple of things. I went to the Line Eight Division governing meeting on Thursday, April 26. Patrick was telling us about, they, they're looking into bumping up the safety issues at the joint annual conference this year in Chicago. If we have any resolutions, they're due by June. And we also discussed a variety of topics of interest for the joint annual conferences. And we discussed how to get more board members involved and possibly change up the slated program for our division meetings, so.
Okay, other board reports.
So John, John mentioned, I'll, I'll drop you the name. I thought I mentioned this, 'cause this actually came out several weeks ago, right before the CU Schools Foundation banquet, but it's made it to the News Gazette for the first time.
Christine Olson, that's right. Pam, Pam's daughter. Pam Olson's daughter. Fantan, a million dollars boom for some great research that she's doing. I think it actually carries out something that our district is very well-known for in terms of, of multicultural awareness and our, our, the exposure that we give to our students about knowing all kinds of people and being able to work with them. Front page of the News Gazette, top of the fold. Today, she's doing research on transgender and.
Social identity.
Social identity, thank you, social identity. And how it, if you read the article, 'cause I don't know it that much, but how, if you work at it at a young age versus working at it at an older age, how more successful the, the child is.
So she won the, the most prestigious world award, worldwide award for research in social ju, in, not social justice, social science research. And so this, you know, all fields of social science compete for this award. And, and Urbana High School graduate won it for this work that she does on transgender identity and social identity for, for youth. And she's, she's truly a groundbreaking researcher in this area and definitely an advocate for LGBTQ issues.
Yeah, and she talked about how children develop bias. And she used her, the article to talk about how her grounding in Urbana, and Urbana High School in particular, really helped inform her worldview about the importance of understanding bias.
Vocational and pick.
Yeah, which is kinda cool.
So it's a good success story for, for the district. I think I am amongst many board members that went to see a great production again of Into the Woods at the high school last, last week. So very enjoyable. Any other board reports this evening? Motion to adjourn would be in order if not. Moved and seconded. I think we're ready to go home. Aye, votes, motion's carried. We're adjourned.